We'd like to welcome, we'd like to welcome everybody out to our city council workshop this evening. We have a workshop that will go for about an hour and then we'll start a regular policy session at seven o'clock. But this is a special, this is a special workshop because we're going to be discussing and appointing an individual to fill the midterm vacancy for Councilmember Vance's seat on the Tremonton City Council. As you all know, Councilmember Vance had asked to resign and he and his wife are going to be serving in LDS mission in faraway lands. Anyway, we're going to be appointing a council member to, or an individual to serve on the Tremonton City Council. What we're going to do, we've got five individuals, I'll kind of go through and identify them. We've got Brian Bowling Brook, Ralph Craven, Brent Jexx.
Could you stand up as you say your name?
Pardon me?
They're going to give a speech.
They're going to give a speech in just a few minutes. So Brent Jexx has had a kind of a family issue come up and he asked to be, so we're going to have Cynthia read, he sent his presentation, we'll have Cynthia read that, but Brent has had something come up and he won't be able to be here. Then we have Norman R.K. and Brandon Vonck. So these individuals will be, their names will be committed, submitted, or those names will be considered and for, for a seat on the Tremonton City Council. Now this seat will last for approximately, will last until the end of this term, so it'll last until December. On January, that seat will be vacated and be filled by somebody who is going to be running for office. So this is a temporary, six-month sort of a thing to fill the seat for Councilmember Vance. And we're going to allot each individual five minutes to explain to us why they want to serve on this, on the council and what they have to offer to the city. So without any further ado, we're going to start and we'll listen, start with Brian Bowling Brook. He'll come up and if you, have you come over here to the podium, Brian, and then we will allow you for five minutes and then we'll go on to Ralph Craven after that.
I apologize. I'm a little under the weather, but I will do the best I can. So my name is Brian Bowling Brook. I have lived here in Tremonton most of my life, other than just a few years I went to school in Provo and Utah State. And I graduated in accounting. I've done retail most of my life, but I also have done a lot of sales. And what I think I can do is, I've seen the ups and downs of Tremonton City and all the things that goes along. I grew up literally right across the street from here, so I have known most everybody over here, most of, most of you guys. And I would love the opportunity to serve here. I'm getting older, so I'm going to retire, so I may as well do something, give back to the community and the people of Tremonton. And that's pretty much all I have today, because I just feel a little bit alone. Thank you.
Okay, Ralph.
I'm trying to set my clock. Last time I did this, I went over.
There's a trap door.
We've got a clock right up here, yeah, we've got a trap door right there.
Okay, well, gentlemen, I wanted to start out, and I guess the first thing I want to say is I'm glad you're sincere in what you're doing, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So why do I want to do this for Tremonton? I want to help Tremonton raise their standard of living. And so this is what I offer. I'm a BYU alumni. I have a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering and a Master's in Business Administration. Some of my career highlights over the last 30-plus years are, I was on the Board of Directors of ABC. I was president of one of Utah's fastest-growing companies, top 500 in the United States. I've worked for 10-plus Fortune 500 companies in solving problems that they've had, problems around performance issues, improving development and training for employees, setting up pay-for-skill programs, establishing great places to work so that everybody comes to work feeling like they can do great things. I've even negotiated contracts for a company, you might know it, Maytag. I've tested and implemented ozonated water for the meat industry, of which, once we compiled the data, we shared it with the USDA. They excitedly posted it and sent it all over the industry, and basically we found this is a new way to control bacteria. I've trained leaders in many different programs and in many different companies on how to reach business objectives. I developed an asset management plan, oh, sorry. I developed an asset management plan for Denone up in Pocatello. They have multiple plants, as well as Glanbia there in Twin Falls, so that they could understand and they could learn how to control their assets, to lengthen their life, and to reduce the costs, something I observed that that might help us here. In my part-time as being employee or whatever, I've engineered and completed at least 20 projects a year for the last 30, 40 years, and that adds up. I come with a lot of energy, I'm excited, I want to light it up. I got a, I have a commitment here. I'm a full-time employee when I come to work, working with you, and I'll be the gopher, Bo. I'll be the gopher, I'll accept that. As far as some issues, people. My philosophy is the best leaders influence people positively. And I know you try to do that, but I watched the video from last night and I'm telling you, you got the tiger by the end of the tail. Thank goodness you're not up front, or they'd eat you. I can help you with that. I can help put together a plan, I can help bring a mass of people together and we can talk about, we can talk about zoning, we can talk about the effects it has, and we can identify the things that they really want us to do. And we'll prioritize those things and we'll get back to them, literally, high, medium, and low. This is what we're going to start on first. I suggest the following, that we divide the Tremonton City into five separate areas demographically, and we assign each council member to one of those areas. You need to get closer to the people, you need to understand what they're feeling, what they're thinking, and make sure that they feel like they are heard and that they are respected. I think the people that work for the city need more challenging work, and I don't mean work harder, I mean more challenging work and help to change the culture. There's one area that I continually hear about, and I'm just going to mention it to you so that you can move forward with it, and it's called conflict of interest. Conflict of interest needs to be such that residents of Tremonton are assured that your decisions being made are not made with personal connections or favoritism. I've heard too much about the Chair of the Planning Commission and the ordinances that were changed in order to hang on to him for multiple terms. I've heard too much about family members and friends working on committees because you've selected them, handpicked them, without asking for volunteers. See, nepotism is a form of favoritism for family members or friends in situations where they're based on relationships rather than actual qualifications. My advice to you is to spend a little time and clean it up. Is my time up?
Yeah, it is.
So I'm available to help. Give me a shot, you won't be dissatisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, Brent is unable to be here, so we'll have Cynthia come up and do his presentation.
Can you do that in deep voice, sir?
I'll try. I'm not good at that. Okay, it says, "To the council, I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but a family emergency last minute caused me to miss. I would be honored to work for this council for the remainder of the term. I'm passionate about public service and their proper role of government. I ask questions, I follow facts, I do get emotionally charged at times, as most of you know. At one point or another, growing up, each one of you has had an impact on me, and the chance to serve the citizens of this city would be a great honor, even though I can't be there. I also understand if not being there tonight nullifies the opportunity, but when family calls in great need, I will always choose them first and foremost. Thank you for the opportunity, Brent."
Thank you. Thanks, Cynthia, for doing that, and thanks for, Brett, for preparing that statement.
You didn't even start the clock on yourself, Cynthia.
Okay, Norman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, fellow citizens of Tremonton. My name's Norman K., and I'm asking to serve you on the City Council. My family roots are from a small town. My family helped found Mona, Utah. I recall growing up how most of that town was somehow related to me, where going to town meant you went to Nephi, and going to the city meant Payson. So even though I've lived different places over the years, when I got married, finished my schooling, the small town is where I wanted to live, which is why in 2003, when I got my first job, we moved to Tremonton. But just because we're a small town, that doesn't mean we have to be limited on what we can do. We can draw on our resources, which includes the residents of Tremonton, to help guide and manage our path to the future. I've had experiences in other places that have shown me the good and the bad that's out there. I've had years of schooling that have taught me a lot about how things can go right and how they can go wrong. I've worked for 22-plus years over the Hill and have extensive experience managing people, defining and balancing budgets, reviewing proposals, participating in change boards, assessing risk, but most importantly, serving my customers. All this experience, along with my desire to serve the people of Tremonton, is what brings me here today. I'm not here with a personal agenda, I'm not here for personal gain. I'm just here to offer my experience, my background, and my skills to the people as we work together to make things better for all of us. Growing up, my father managed a gas station and my mother was a grocery store cashier. Back in the halcyon days, when those were careers that actually had pensions, I grew up seeing them serve others and hearing stories about their work. I remember from a young age hearing about some bad days, but mostly they heard about the fulfillment and satisfaction they got from helping others who they came into contact with. I heard how people would come to my mom's line with their groceries, even if her line was longer than the others. And even though it may get me in trouble with my mom, they didn't come to her because she was the best cashier. They came to her because they enjoyed their interactions with her, and more importantly, because they trusted her. My father also shared similar stories about his work. It was through serving the people and doing what was in their best interest, either stated or unstated, that earned their trust. It was also interacting with them, talking with them, and learning about them that helped them better understand what their customers wanted and how to best serve them. The people of Tremonton are no different. We may not know everyone in town, but we are still small enough that we see people we know on a regular basis. That personal level helps drive where we go and who we choose to work with. Our government representatives also fall into that category. We need to be seen, we need to be known, we need to be approachable, and we need to be hearing them. This helps us know what is in their best interest and helps them to develop trust for those who serve and represent them. They may have faith that we will do right by them, but our actions are what earns their trust. My goal as a City Council representative would be to immerse myself in the details of the city government, to learn the wants and needs of the people and the city, to developing an in-depth understanding of the issues that exist now and in the future, and to bring to the table my background and experience to work towards a better future. I went to school for a very long time. I got my PhD in engineering, and I wanted to teach because I wanted to help others. I ended up going into industry, but I still work to serve my customers. My career then took me into program management. I've worked budgets of four figures, nine figures, and everything in between. I've prepared proposals, I've negotiated with customers, I've worked very, very large contracts, very complicated contracts, and problems. I had to learn finance, contracts, and many things that weren't covered in school, but I dedicated myself to learning from those who were willing to teach me. I even went back to school and earned my MBA. I am always willing to learn and be taught so that I can be more informed and better execute my duties. None of us knows everything, but together we come extremely close. I'm not here to talk about my personal beliefs or to tell you what's right or wrong. I'm here because I want to serve. I want to help us work together to, from the information we have to the information we don't have, to put together teams, committees, groups, to work together, to collaborate with the council and the citizens of Tremonton to work towards change.
Your time's, your time's up.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Okay, Brandon.
Well, thanks for giving me the opportunity to do this. I think we ought to do this in our regular meetings so that, you know, people that have comments, they can get it out quick and more people can say what they need to say. That'd be a good idea. So I'm Brandon Vonck. My wife, LaDon, she's not here tonight, she, she had surgery on her knee, so she's not able to be here, but I just want to introduce myself to you. Been here in the state of Utah for 23 years. I work for Intermountain Health. The last seven years of my career, I've been, I am the hospital president, and I'm also the chief nursing officer at Bear River Valley Hospital. I have a bachelor in nursing and I have an MBA, master's in MBA. My wife and I are both from small towns. When we moved to Utah, we started out in St. George, and we got out of there just in time. And then we moved to Lehigh, and we were there for several years, and we got out of there just in time. And we're really grateful for what Tremonton has to offer. We like the slower pace, and we really like the fact that we get to know people really well, and that's really important to us. And we plan to be here for the rest of our lives. I'll retire from Bear River Valley Hospital unless something really drastic changes and I'm, I'm pushed out, but I still won't leave Tremonton if that were the case. I think it's really important that you know this about me, and that's that I live by budget, I've always lived by budget, and living by budget creates a lot of freedom. It's created a lot of freedom for me. I've got six children, and the oldest two have found, that are married, they have found their spouses here locally. My son, Cade, works at Procter &amp; Gamble, he's married to Ava, who was Ava Jardine. And my oldest daughter, Madison, she's married to Jake Green, he works out at Nucor. And they both have good, good jobs, but neither one of them can afford a house. And I've been fortunate because of my budget that I've been able to buy a couple houses, and I've been able to fix them up and rent them back to them really cheap. And it's created that opportunity for them to live nearby, one across the street and one just a street over. And I think it's really getting really, really difficult for people to live in the state of Utah, even in Tremonton. And I think we've got to be really, really dedicated as a council to think about what we can personally do as a council, as a group, to make it easier and more affordable. There's a lot of things that are not in our control, and I recognize that. And you can't promise the moon, there's only so much we can do. But one thing we can do is be really smart with the revenue and our expenditures and do what's right for our community. I also know that there's a lot of comments that were made yesterday even that can be unrealistic, but I was also grateful that I saw a change in the tone. I saw that people were starting to show a little more respect for one another. And up until that moment, I was really debating if I wanted to do this, but once I saw that the tides had changed a little bit, it, it said, okay. I said, okay, I'm willing to do this because, you know, I'm not here to make a lot of friends and I'm not here to make a lot of enemies, that's not my purpose. I just want to do what's right, and I'm not going to stand here and act like I have all the answers, but I think if, if I were voted in, that I would be able to, to contribute at a high level, given my knowledge of budgets and contracting and things of that nature. And that goes by quick. I think Ralph said something pretty cool about dividing into sections, I really liked that. I don't know the other members that are running very well. I also didn't know that I'd be running against Bo. When I signed up, I just kind of did it on a whim. In my opinion, there's really only one position that's available, because I think Bo's doing a great job. I also think Brent has stated a lot of things on social media that have been really popular with people. I guess my request to you is, when you make a decision, I hope that you'll maybe decide on your, if you have a pulse on the community, who's most likely to be voted in? Because for me, I don't, I don't know if I want to sit in that seat for just a few months and then not be voted in by the, the voice of the people. I think that would be a really strange situation for me, and so I hope you'll consider that. So thank you for your time.
All right. So the way we'll proceed now is, you know, we've had a chance to hear everybody and their presentations. We have read your, your comments that you sent and, or your, your-
BIOS.
BIOS that you sent, thank you, and gone through that. And so we've had a chance to get to know each of you a little bit better. What we'll do at this point is, because this is a council member that we're going to be appointing to this seat, this, this person will be appointed and they'll, once they are voted on, and they'll come up and take the seat over here by Bo. But what we'll do is, we'll go through a voting process. The mayor does not vote on this seat, it'll be strictly done by the four council members. So each of them have a ballot, and what they'll do is they will, we'll give them an opportunity to vote, and then those ballots will be turned over to Cynthia, and she'll do the account, she'll do the enumeration, and she'll count up who's got the most votes, and if we have a tie, then we'll vote again on those, those persons that are in the tie. And if we continue to have a tie, then we will, if it comes down to two people, then we'll have a coin toss. So that's sort of the process that we'll go forward with now. And so with that, council, we'll turn the time over to you. You can vote for one, and we'll take it.
We'll vote in the policy session.
Oh, that's right, we vote in the policy session and then we'll go forward. That's correct. But anyway, that's sort of the process that we'll go in, and then we get into the policy session, and then we'll do that, so thank you for the correction. At this point, we are going to, we have a discussion regarding the old Griss Mill. Bruce Leishman, you're here. Bruce here?
He isn't. He's right here. I'm Curtis.
Okay, do you, are you doing the presentation then?
I wasn't, but he's.
Coming right there?
There he is.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Give him a standing ovation when he walks in.
Everybody turn around and look at him.
It's just your money, huh?
We want sandwiches. We want sandwiches.
All right.
I bet he didn't bring a loaf of bread for being late.
Well, Bruce, we're all, we're all ready for you.
Brad.
And we, we got through the presentations, so we're-
Oh, good.
You were next on the agenda.
So I emailed, did you get copies of, of all of that, has everybody? Okay. I just wanted to review from, some things from our previous meeting. So I hope that the sales numbers that are provided are somewhat confidential to this group, because, you know, just so you, we appreciate that. I think you can look at those numbers and apply your own calculations and see what kind of revenue would come into the city based on sales tax. The second thing I did, I, we had two bids on the parking lot. The Johnson bid was, was kind of, can we say more realistic? The Rupp one was kind of just an estimate based upon, no, we didn't have exact drawings, and so that one's maybe a little less accurate than the other one, so you'll have an idea of what the costs are, at least do the parking lot. I don't think we have bids on signage yet, but we could get some bids for a sign on the property. I think our question really is, there's been some discussions for quite some months about financially, either whether it's an RDA or a no-interest loan or something that would incentivize to help bring that project to completion.
Can you have any questions for Bruce?
Do you mind sharing a little bit about some of the structure of how other cities have done it with you?
Sure. Been involved with two. One of them was with the Smithfield location where we built the, in the Griss Mill area, it was an RDA. And the RDA fronted up the cost of doing all of the parking lot, the signage on the building, and some exterior renovation of the building. And as I remember, you'll have to help me, Curtis, it was somewhere around 160,000 to 180,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. That was, that was an RDA, so it was just, it was a, it was a grant that was given to the Griss Mill to incentivize them to take an old building that had been vacant. It was the old, it was an, it was an old 7-Eleven building, yeah, there in Smithfield. It was vacant, hadn't been occupied for some time, and it's now a pre-going concern. It's a good, while it was there, and so that's how that worked. The other one that I was involved with, involved a no-interest loan that the city provided, said, here's, we'll, we'll give you this loan, you pay it back over this set of terms. It happened to be, in that case, it was a, it was an eight-year deal. They paid it back over eight years with no interest, so.
Any other questions for Bruce?
I don't. Any other questions you have or whatever?
All right, Bruce.
I, I would just say, feedback from, from citizens-
Sure.
-has been very positive about getting old Griss Mill hair.
Here, okay. Good.
They're very, very excited. And then maybe just from an economic development committee standpoint, we're, we're gathering together our general, you know, our economic development plan.
Okay.
And I think it would have to be a part of that. We don't want to slow down the process, though.
Okay.
So that, you know, just being transparent, we're setting the vision for the economic development plan of the city, and part of that is, you know, getting city administration and all of us on the same page, and the citizens' view of what they want. So we don't want to slow you down.
Let me just ask this. Timeframe, I guess we're just looking at two things. Number one, could there be some sort of financial incentive, number one? Number two, timeframe, when that might be, and maybe how it would be structured? Those were some questions.
We'll have to discuss that and-
Okay.
And come back with you, come back to you with an answer on that.
That's great.
So it's not on the agenda, we don't have that as part of our discussion for this evening, but we will, we'll work with the Economic Development Committee and get some recommendations from them, and then we can kind of go forward from there.
That's awesome.
And I think being transparent, you know, from, if you haven't followed all the city meetings, is we're, we just got done with our budgets and we're getting into capital asset schedules, which will determine what we can and can't do.
Sure, understand.
So it's kind of cart before the horse to say yes or no-
Sure.
-when we don't have the, the asset schedule laid out. when we don't have the, the asset schedule laid out.
Okay.
Is that a fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Timeframe, I mean, is, is that a three month? Is it a three-year deal?
No, I, I don't think we're, we, you know, probably more in the term of, uh, months that we could come up with some sort of a, I mean, we don't want to drag you along like Bo said. We don't want to drag it along, but we need to, you know, we need to consider all of our side of it too.
Sure, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, next we have a presentation on the zoning for the LB Land Holdings annexation. And we've asked Jeff if he would, uh, come up here and give this presentation. And then if Brody and if you want to fill in or help wherever, I think Jeff was going to involve you two is wherever. So we'll turn the time over to, uh, Jeff and we'll kind of go from there. Thank you.
So for the past, um, few months, the planning commission's been looking at this zoning out here. We've had public hearing, had a few, um, meetings actually to discuss and, and resolve. And this is the zoning that was recommended by the planning commission for the call LB Land Holdings annexation. Um, it has five different zoning types, uh, with the RR dash one being our rural residential zone. And that was given to all of the existing residential lots in Freeman Farms and those on 10,000 North. Uh, the only existing structure that got a different zone would be the wood property on Iowa string because of the event venue that is on the parcel. It was zone, it was proposed to be zoned mixed use to address both the residential and commercial aspect of the lot. We have a manufacturing, um, zone to cover the parcels that is the cement plant. Um, what's hard to see on here is there's three parcels that make up that whole cement plant. So, um, and then lastly, we have three different, uh, residential zoning for, um, just agricultural fields or farms right now. So the R120, which is 20,000 square foot minimum lot sizes, uh, ten, R110 is the Harris Enterprises property that's 10,000 square foot minimum lots. And then the LB Land Holdings acreage is R18 or 8,000 square foot minimum lots.
As a base.
And the, uh, total, the total annexation is about just north of 211 acres. But that involves all of the parcels there, not just the, uh, blue parcel. Cause that's a little confusing, at least it was to me. But, um, it involves all of, was there six? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Thirty-something parcels.
Yeah, okay. So it involves all of those 211 acres in the drawings there.
So does the same, obviously the little lots are different, but are the same people own the R18s and the R120? Do you own all that?
So, so that's, that's why I wanted to talk today because I think there's a lot of confusion as to what's going on. And so I wanted to come and just kind of break it down because I think everybody thinks that the 211 acres is all, what we're trying to zone is R18. And, and this is why I think it's really important to look at it because you have, you know, in a community of a diversity of different things that are happening, a diversity of types of, of lots. And so we've got R18 and that's our, that's the only property that we own in this annexation that's being proposed. Now we do own another piece that is already annexed, right there. But the, the R18 piece is the annexation. So we, we requested the annexation, um, and my wife's going to go over that here in just one second here. But we'd requested the annexation and the city had requested that we add more people into it. So that's the only piece that's giving anybody any heat right now is our piece, which is the 38 acres of the R18. And so I think that's been the most discussed topic there. And I, and I also want to just make clarification that I know we've had a lot of talk about, um, just, oh, sorry.
Can you bring that back up? Yeah, sorry.
We've had a lot of talk about, you know, what, what's going to be put on there. And, and we, we really don't know for sure everything that we're going to put on there yet until we actually get a zone, right? And so, uh, we've thought of different things that we're going to put on our parcel. But, but the reality is tonight is the R18, which just gives the density. And it's nothing to do with our housing tonight, right? Like, we don't know, our, our just single family housing is what's there. If we do a development agreement, then like those, we can talk through those things and that would come before you guys at another time. Um, I just want to make sure that that's clear because I think a lot of the residents have concern about, um, multifamily housing and whatnot, but that's not what's in front of us tonight. Just want to make sure that that was a clear understanding in that regard. Any questions on that part?
Okay. I would note as well that it expanded to this size so that the lift station that Brody would have to put in as part of his development could be sized to be a regional lift station that could handle a good portion of Iowa string down to the third ward church.
So the lift stations still go down there?
Lift station's still going down there and we will work with the Anderson, um, Anderson property to get the, the, uh, footprint for that as soon as we start getting into the engineering and design of that actual lift station. Um, and they, they know that's coming. We just aren't to that point yet.
So can you take a minute and talk about the economics of going with an R18? And, and how that will help out the city with this lift station and all that?
Take your foot from the start there.
So real quick, I thought it might be helpful.
And if it's okay along with it, the context of like, what if it was R110 or, you know, the, the differences between?
Or one acre lots or?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yes, we would love to go over that because we actually thought, you know, with more information comes better decisions, right? So we thought we'd actually probably take it from the beginning of this project with the motivations and goals. So as it was said, we actually bought that first parcel up that's already white, that's annexed into the city. And remember, this is all unzoned, unincorporated box other counties. So when we bought that parcel, we could put anything on it, commercial, industrial, whatever we wanted. We actually bought that thinking we were going to do storage units, um, because it already does have a water tap. But because the county changed our annexation requirements, which we actually agree with, it's good because it does better development. We had to go to the city to, um, see if we should be annexed in or not, right? So when we met with the city and kind of told them our plan, and this is actually pre-Jeff, how long we've been working on this. This was back with Sean actually. He said, we have a housing crisis and our land plan actually calls for housing there. He's like, would you consider housing? He also brought up another issue and that is Freedom Farms. Um, they were having some septic issues. And so he said, if, would you, could we look at housing so we could get sewer to come across the freeway? Which is of course really expensive. And so one reason why I kind of wanted to address why he was so concerned and why we as citizens should actually be really concerned about what's happening in Freedom Farms is because as the septic start to fail, it becomes a public health safety issue. And the state could actually come in and force you to go on your system, which she might, might not be ready for and the taxpayers have to pay for. We actually saw this with Yukon Water. My husband sits on a water board and, um, there was a subdivision that was all on Culinary Wells. And when they failed, the state came in and forced it onto Yukon system, um, because it's the closest. And so that's why he was very concerned about what's happening in Freedom Farms. So that's what started the whole discussion about us changing this, our plans to housing, more affordable housing because of the housing crisis and especially to look at helping Freedom Farms so that the taxpayers might not have to swallow this one day. So we started having meetings. We actually asked to have meetings with the people of Freedom Farms. That's not normally common for developers, but we wanted to really get that insight. And we got enough approval and signatures that we were able to be annexed, that they were very supportive under, especially those who are having septic that are failing, what we were able to work with them. Now, while we were doing this and started working with the city as far as where the sewer would go, because once again, remember legally, we just have to be able to provide for our, like, as a developer, we have to pay to bring the infrastructure to our development, right? Well, they said, you know what? So is there any way we could try to get a regional lift station in? Because otherwise you're going to bring it to yours and in the future we're going to have to bring it here and here and here. And that's just, can we, is there any way we could do this right the first time? And that's when we ended up buying the next parcel, um, and working it out with the Andersons. Because we're like, okay, if we're going to do this to do this right, we're going to double down our investment and our risk so that way we can help the city get what's right and the right infrastructure. Because now as a developer, we're going to be needing to pay for even more infrastructure because now we own more property to make it actually feasible. So as far as where the zoning came from, we first requested RM8, as you'll see from our development agreement. And where that came from is that parcel is actually on your land use plan as industrial and across the street was RM8. And so when working with the city, they're like, let's just flip that so we could help with the housing. And so when we came to this meeting, RM8 wasn't really received very well. So we went back and thought, what is the most least density we could do to accomplish the housing issues with affordability? Um, he owns a mortgage company, so we're able to look at median income and all those things and what they could afford as well as be able to make it work feasibly so that we can help pay for the sewer to get where it needs to go. And that's where the 1R8 came from, um, there. So I guess, do you want to add any? And that's where we're at today.
I, I think it's important just to note that the, the types of housing, right? I mean, I think you're wanting to hit on, you know, what, what can we put in there? And realistically, you know, we have a major housing crisis. Affordability is our biggest problem right now. And we have housing shortage. And so, um, I think one of the candidates was running on it, talking about he's having to literally subsidize his children to, to get in here. And this is an opportunity for us to do smaller, single-family lots, um, which are more affordable than if we throw in the half acres or acre lots, right? If you do a half acre lot, you're looking at around 600, $700,000 lots prices for a home sitting on there. And it just doesn't pencil for the majority of the people. Only 10% of the Utah population, that doesn't include Foxhelder County, only 10% could afford that as it currently sits in Utah today. And so I, I think that the biggest thing is, is, you know, you, you touched on, you know, can we go to R110? I mean, we can relook at numbers, but the reality is, is I think that as we, we try to dive in and dissect this, that R18 makes most sense. And we're not sitting here trying to, you know, jam RM8, RM8 or even RM16 at, at the citizens or residents. We're, we're really trying to help what the need is. And really the need is really small. It sounds like most people are really wanting the small, single-family lots to be able to make that need happen. We've got a lot of townhomes in, in the area. We really have a shortage of, of short, small starter homes. And that is a really big problem that the city has right now that we're seeing. And if you look online, there's not very many that are available in that proximity of that three to $400,000 mark.
I think that's what I'm most excited about. I call them cottage homes. I just want to build cute little homes on little lots. And so when someone actually commented that last night, I'm like, that's actually the vision. That's what we want. That's what our builder partners, like I said, we're in lending, that's what they want. But as far as addressing the difference between 1R8 and 1R10, that really comes to like the development agreement because this gives us the density that we feel comfortable helping with most cost. The less dense you go, the more costs that we don't cover.
We can't cover.
We can't cover. And as, and last night, as they're talking about tax increases, I think that's really important to listen to. They're not wanting their taxes increased. So that's like, this is where we feel comfortable, right? We're investing in the city, upfronting a ton of money versus taking it somewhere else to invest to make something great for Tremont. And so that's, that's where we were at with that.
On a larger picture and as, as well as, because it's planned to be a regional lift station, the city will have better control over the development that happens within the watersheds, the cleaner term for this, but the service area for the lift station. Because we'll be designing it to handle probably two to about three units per acre. And right now, the way this is land out, it just pushes most of those units into Brody's development so that he can create affordable housing while getting the city's infrastructure out there. Once it's out there, we're going to have a little bit better control of what the development looks like because the lift station will be an extremely large governing factor of what developers can do. They can always elect to upsize lift stations, but in my, in my past life of doing this, that's not always where developers want to go. They, they see that they can maybe get less units per acre and that's fine by them, but they don't want to put the capital improvements into expand a lift station because of how costly that can be.
I've been asked a lot about just lift stations in general and their approach and that they can kind of stink and, you know, are they the best route to go? Whether, you know, lift station, could you mind elaborating your mindset around those? Cause I think that clarity is important in context.
The only thing more expensive than lift stations to operate for a city is a sewer treatment plant. To build, to relocate a sewer treatment plant so that the entire city was downhill would be very expensive. And that's nothing that one developer would ever carry. So regionally, the city engineer and me and, um, Paul and even our current public works director have had discussions around what to do with this area that is starting to gravity away from our treatment plant. There isn't a very affordable answer, but in the interim, lift stations are the answer. Now, they're very difficult to design. There is a balance you're trying to strike between making sure that the effluent doesn't go septic, but also that your pumps are not running themselves out and burning themselves out. Um, St. Charles is in Idaho has had many problems with their pumps burning out because groundwater is septic and so those things run for so long, they burn themselves out. And all they've really done is helped, um, keep Bear Lake safe from groundwater. They're difficult. It is a balance of time, of power, of redundancy. Most lift stations end up having, not most, all the stations by state code have to have a generator with a fuel source there. They have to have a, a very expensive electronic data that has to tell each pump when to kick on. Um, they have floats in them that will tell the pump when to kick on. The electronic system alternates which of the two or three pumps that are down there to turn on. The pumps also are extremely inefficient in a time of power because they have to have what's called grinder, they're grinder pumps. They have to have, um, blades on them to chew up the sewage in order to get it into a four or eight inch pipe. They are frankly, an, uh, itch to design. Um, I've done many of them through my nine years as a civil engineer. They're a balancing act between what is it going to take from day one when this thing turns on? To what does it have to look like at the final thing when it hits full service area?
What are the alternatives?
The alternatives is sincerely relocating the, um, relocating the treatment plant because.
Building another one on the other side.
And getting one on the other side. So as much fun as Carl just had in his boots shaking when I just uttered that as the alternative, it's not great. And that's, it's, that is the alternative is if it, if you're not going to pump it uphill, you've got to let it flow downhill.
I can speak to that just a little bit too. Where I was at in Texas, similar situation, it's just extremely flat. And, um, we had 34 lift stations in the, in the town that I lived in of 5,000 people. That should give you an idea of what it was like there. And the city paid $12 million to install a 35-foot-deep, six-foot diameter, uh, deep trunk sewer line. They had to dig it by hand because of all the pipelines that were in the area. That's the alternative. We got rid of half of the lift stations in town with that trunk line and $4 million grant that we got from the federal government. One lift station, Brigham City, we just had lunch with them. They have six in town. And they work fine. They don't hate them, but they don't love them because they are maintenance-heavy and they're, uh, expensive to operate and maintain. But the alternative being a, a second treatment plant, which is 20, 30, 50 million dollars somewhere over on the, by Salt Creek, you know, that's, uh, that's unfeasible, especially for a relatively small development like this. Now, if they, if you were doing another Tremont in size development somewhere along that, over on that side, it might be worth thinking about. And as an alternative, that's really the only other option. That you can't gravity feed from here all the way up to, uh, our, our.
Can't gravity feed up.
It goes gra, it's, it's not downhill.
So that is, what goes downhill is true.
Yeah. So that's, the rest of town does gravity feed down into the, into the treatment plant. But because of the location of this being literally downhill from there, albeit very slowly downhill, it's, um, there aren't any really good options.
Where are we looking to place that?
So the lift station? So there is a house on the, so there's the third ward church that the intersection, in the southeastern intersection of, uh, Iowa string and 9600 North. And right north of that is a residential house. The Andersons know that right behind that house is where the lift station is going to go so that it, it is at its southernmost downhill point to collect as much as it can.
Can you, uh, can you kind of address, uh, there, there was concerns about, uh, you know, the lift station creating smells and, can you address that?
That's the balance of trying to not, so the, the state code tells you. That's the balance of trying to not, so the, the state code tells you how many cycles you can have per day. Um, so, and what a cycle is, is your pump turning on, running, and then turning off, and then what that lag time is between that pump turning on and the next pump having to turn on. Where the smell can come from, although we work to really not have it happen, is that when you're in your lower flow times of day, and especially, um, which hopefully this won't, won't have as much because of the, of the concrete plant, but I don't know how much water they generate. But when those pumps aren't really turning on during the middle of the day, because you haven't, you're in a low, um, low demand portion, it just kind of accumulates in the bottom of what's known as the wet well. And that's when the stink can happen, but it's
Does it have breather? Are there breather?
It does, but it, it still can happen. I mean, you, we ventilate it out and there's ways to try and direct the flow. But if you're standing up, when, if you're standing down wind from a shit pile, you're going to smell a shit pile. I mean, I don't know about her. I haven't been around a dairy farm that, you know, even if they've cleaned out their stalls, you're not feeling, you're not noticing that somebody just went.
Mayor, can I ask Carl? Carl, you got any add-ons or concerns?
Yeah, please.
You know, Josh's house is listening next to you.
Hi, Carl.
Yeah, so, um, as has been discussed, this is the first kind of test case that we would have to, to put in a lift station. Developments that have been, uh, in Tremonton City up to this point of the location. I think, I think the location of the existing wastewater treatment plant was very ideal for the circumstances that were envisioned. Uh, but just this particular location, um, would require that. We've already established that. The plant can handle it with the upgrades that we're going to do. Plant can handle that. I'll tell you what my concern is. My concern, it, it's similar to the concern I raised a month ago with the storm drain. And that's when we upsize, and then the city becomes responsible for the upsize paying for that. That's, that's my concern. And, and so I think it becomes, uh, necessary to figure out what the details of, of making that a regional, or whatever terminology you call that, a regional
Lift station.
Lift station is. If it was just for that development, the, the subdivision, the developer would put it in. And, and it could, and we could do multiple of them. I mean, I think we ought to really look at, I mean, that's, that's something else that could be on the table. But that's my concern is when you regionalize something, who is, and the city ends up paying for that? Like, how is the city going to pay for that?
So, so let me, let me see if I can address that. You know, um, one thing that we could consider is a planned infrastructural district, um, and, and making that, uh, I'm not sure for sure if you're familiar with a planned infrastructure district. We could look at doing that, and it would, in essence, put the burden on to those residents, um, as it comes up. And if that, that's something, you know, we could put it just in the community there, in the taxes, so it wouldn't burden the whole city, but just as a thought.
Um, I will say, though, the councils, like the city's somewhat been prepared for lift stations, because my first council meeting, when I was appointed to be on the planning commission, the council approved the adoption of a lift station standard drawing to be in our public works standards. So, and that was three years ago. So our city engineer and, and Paul, our ex-public, our old public works director, they knew this was coming. And I think they adopted those standards so that we at least communicated what those lift, what the lift stations need to look like. And we're, three years later, we're at our first one.
Yeah, we can handle it. I don't think that's, that's not my issue. My issue is, is what are the details? We need to really figure those out and how we're going to make that regional.
I'm sure we'll have one or two DRC meetings.
Which takes place in the development agreement. Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's five minutes to, let's take a
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Just really quick. I called a, a guy from Delta today that's, and they have a lot of their, um, lift stations and talked to him about that, and, and particularly smell. And he said, depending on the way it's designed, and if, if you do it a certain way, he says where you get your smell is when something drops and hits and the, the splashes, and then you start getting the smell. So you want to avoid that as much as possible. So he said, there's ways you can design to help. And he says they have no problem with smell at all i- in their area.
In Delta.
Yeah, so.
Good to know.
Okay. All right. Well, let's, uh, take a five-minute break, and we'll start our policy seven, uh, policy session at seven o'clock.
All right, it's seven o'clock. Uh, we're going to call this, uh, policy session to order. And, um, we'd like to welcome everybody out this evening for, uh, city council meeting. And, uh, we have a lot of, uh, important things we're going to be discussing tonight. So without any further ado, we'll go ahead and start with our opening ceremony. Um, I'm going to offer the pla- the, um, prayer, the opening prayer, and, uh, asked, uh, council member Westergaard if he'll give us the pledge, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We'll go to that point.
Our Father in heaven, as we come before thee at this time, we're thankful for the blessings which we have. We're grateful for the opportunity of being together this evening in our city council meeting. We are grateful for the opportunity to be neighbors and friends and, and, uh, interested parties in, in the goings-on here in our community. We're grateful for those who are willing to put themselves forward to serve our community, uh, this evening for their presentations and for their interest in, in our community. We pray for thy spirit and blessing to be with them. We're grateful for those who serve, uh, our police department, and those who serve in our police department, fire department, emergency preparedness. And we ask for thy spirit and blessing to be upon them and bless them with safety and they go about doing their duties. We pray for thy spirit to be with us this evening, that we might be able to, um, be civil and we might be able to discuss matters that are in the best interest of the city and that we can move forward. And these things be said in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Blair. Okay, uh, since we have a, quite a few people who maybe aren't , uh, regulars here, that, uh, maybe come here for the first time, I'm just going to go around the table here and kind of introduce everybody. We have our city manager down here, uh, Bill Kabe, and then Bo Lewis, council member Bo Lewis, Blair Westergaard, myself, um, Lyle Holmgren, Brett, uh, Brett Rody, and Wes E Step. And then we have Cynthia Nel- Nelson down here, who's our city recorder and, and, uh, let's see, Greg Horsepool, codes, our code officer, and Jeff Seedall, and Michelle Rhodes, and my, oh, we got Jeff Seedall back, I mean, Jeff Jarrell back there in the back, uh, fire chief. And I don't see our police chief here, but he will be in a little bit. And, uh, yeah, and Carl, oh, I'm sorry, Carl. And let's see, Shari Euler back in the back. So we've got quite a few people
Short time Shari.
Short time Shari. We're going to call her that. We're out, out. Short time Shari. Okay. Anyway, we appreciate, uh, those who are serving on the council here, and we appreciate those who serve us, our, serve our city, uh, staff-wise. With that, council, um, I've had an opportunity to go through the agenda this evening. Are there any, uh, conflicts of interest? Hearing none, uh, we'll, uh, let's go ahead and move forward. Uh, approval of the agenda. Now, we do have, um, one change to the agenda on item number, uh, eight B. I've asked, uh, council member Rody if he would, it reads, currently reads discussion and consideration of, of creating an, a nomination committee, commission that will vet nominations for the new Tremonton Justice Court judge. And we've been asked to reword that a little bit. And why don't you go ahead and read that, please?
Okay. Um, did you want me to make a nomination and, or read this?
Uh, let's see, we're, yeah, we're, we're in approval of the agenda mode, so why don't you?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the following change to eight A?
No, eight B, eight B.
Discussion and consideration of appointing two people to be on the nomination commission to help vet nominations for the new Tremonton Justice Court judge.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Brett and seconded by Bo. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, the, the, uh, agenda hasn't been approved. Approval of the minutes for June seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Have everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any changes necessary?
I'll make a motion to reapprove the minutes of June seventeenth.
I second it.
Motion by Wes and seconded by Blair. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion to have approved the minutes has pa- has passed. Okay, now, uh, we have, um, discussion, uh, appointment and oath of office. So we have, um, discussion and consideration of adopting resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-eight, appointing Michelle Rhodes to serve as the Tremonton City Treasurer. Uh, any discussion on that, council? I think this is
I got a couple of things, Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, I've been, oh, Michelle, don't worry. Maybe you should. The time that I spent working for the city and coming in and out of the office and all that, I seen her and Shari been talking. You know, she's, she's been learning this job, not for, since, you know, Shari knew she was going to go, didn't know when, but she stepped right up to that job. And, and working with Michelle, she's, she's always been, what more can I do? Takes pride in her work, has the patience, has the, you know, when somebody's water gets shut off, she's the first one that she talks to. And when she gets done with them, they're glad that the water got shut off, but it's going to be turned back on. So, yeah, I think Michelle is, is prepared for this job. And, and if we have no other discussion, I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Motion by Wes. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Blair. Let's see, let's start over with you, Bo.
Bo, yes.
Blair, yes.
Brett, yes.
Wes, yes.
The motion passes. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Job, and we're excited to be able to work with you on this. Okay, so with that, now that, uh, we'll make it completely official, you got to come up here and, and, uh, Cynthia's going to swear you in.
Official bean counter.
You have the right hand. Oh.
I solemnly swear, that I will support, obey and defend
That I will support, obey and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Utah
and the Constitution of the State of Utah.
and that I will discharge the duties
and I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
What she signed.
Oh, my life, Ray.
It's your life, well.
I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to all. Spend the best eight years.
War to come.
Yes.
War to come. There we go. Okay. Thank you, Michelle. All right, uh, our next, uh, our next item on the agenda is a public comment period. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas that are relevant or germane to the municipal business. And we're asking you to keep your comments to under And we're asking you to keep your comments to under three minutes. Time is now yours.
I won't need three minutes, but my name's James Peterson. I am not a resident of Tremonton City, but I very much am affected by the decisions and discussions of what's going on tonight. And I would strongly encourage the city council to just slow down, take a breath, and put a hold on some of the decisions that you're being asked to make and really validate the implicit and explicit cost to the city and to the residents of the, the public utility, specifically the sewage issue of coming, we're facing with. The Freedom Farms has, I feel like it was a very rushed through development. The city was very much in control of the, of approving. The septic tanks were installed. The ones that failed were not from being properly installed when the water table rose. And I would just strongly encourage, just put some things in abeyance, step back, and really validate third-party authentications of cost, both short and long term. Anyway, that's all.
One correction, it was the county that authorized those septic tanks. We didn't have anything to do with the authorization of those. It was the county. So, that, just a correction there.
Okay, well, thank you. I stand corrected.
Thank you, James. Appreciate your comments.
Kristi Bokut, first of all, congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
Michelle is hardworking. She is honest to the core. And she is top of my book. She's family. What the heck? I'll throw that, sorry, Ralph, I'll throw that out there. Okay, one question that keeps coming up all the time is, what is affordable housing? No one has answered that question. Developers come in, well, I'm going to build affordable housing. We don't know what affordable housing is. But we throw that out like it is candy in a candy store. So until that is defined, take a step back. Who's going to be paying for the lift tank, lift system, once it's in? We all know it's going to fall back on the residents. Can they afford that? Nope. In the last city council meeting, you said you were going to put a pause on building until the general plan is up to date. That hasn't happened. Meeting last night, there was a comment about retention ponds. This week, I've had a long conversation with two people that have been directly affected by retention ponds and their house flooding numerous times. They fail. They have spent tens of thousands of dollars of their own money. They asked for help from the city. They didn't get it. Their developers probably often Barbados, sipping pina coladas somewhere. Because developers come, developers go. We're stuck with the problem. Residents are stuck with the problem. They still have the problem to this day. Retention ponds fail. You start digging into the ground, the water has its own little channels that it likes to travel in. I grew up on a farm. I know a few things. You start digging in there, you put the cement in there, and it's like running a hose on a cement driveway. You don't know where it's going to go because you've just changed its channel. There are issues that really needs to be taken into consideration when these decisions are made. They're serious. They affect lives. And quite frankly, I'm on Social Security. It affects my pocketbook. If I am stuck paying more fees, more anything, and it's not just me, there's a ton of people. So just take it a step back, please.
Thanks, Kristi.
Jamie Poppleton, Tremonton resident. I had a chance to attend the farmer's market on Saturday. I was able to walk around for a couple hours. It's just been kind of crazy with everything going on. And I hadn't had a chance to get up there yet. I have been asked by four people that had a booth there that feel like if they were to come here and make a public comment, what they still might, that they probably would not be heard because they have directed some of their questions and their concerns to Parks and Rec and hasn't gotten anywhere. There is absolutely, let me back up. There's two food vendors on Saturday morning. And the two booths that I actually spoke in depth with didn't even sell two products. Because a couple, maybe a month or so ago, we had a discussion at a city council meeting or a town hall, I'm not sure which one, I'd have to go back and check, about mixing that up on Friday and Saturday. And nothing has even just been discussed since then. So we'll, we'll put it for a later discussion, but nothing gets resolved. So there are several that would like to pull out of the farmer's market, but they have paid for it here. Said it would be nice to suggest to somebody to get to Parks and Rec, since they're getting nowhere, to have a banner or something on Main Street with an arrow aimed towards Schuman Park. The banner at Kent you can't see. It's jumbled with too much stuff driving down the road at 20 or 30. You can't really read it to know where it's at. So we just was able to, I was, to have some in-depth conversations with some of those. And that's their concerns. They enjoyed it at Midland Square. It was packed. There was no place to park, and it was hot. They enjoy the shade, but they don't have the food trucks on Saturday. There was a barbecue and an ice cream, and that was it. So I told them I would come in, have this discussion with you guys this evening. If they would like to come and address this or email you, whichever one they would prefer to do, but they're just thoroughly disgusted right now. They thought coming up here, their anger would probably show more and their frustration than anything else. So I'm here on behalf of three of them that I did speak with that said it is an issue and they would like that addressed because it was discussed a month ago and nothing has happened. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jamie.
Hi, I'm Ralph Crasman. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about is a maintenance program for the city. I believe that everybody in this room and everybody that lives here wants our city to be pristine, to be beautiful, something to be proud of. But one way to accomplish that and to make it a significant step towards that is to have a good maintenance program where inspections are done and corrections are made before a total failure. And let me give you an example of that. A few, a few council meetings ago, there was a discussion about sidewalks. And in this room, we were led to believe that the sidewalks are in good repair. Well, if we don't question to the void as leaders, then we have to go inspect what we want seen. So I did, and I went down Fremont, came back. State law says that any elevation change greater than an inch and a half between the slabs of a sidewalk can, can be considered a liability. As you approach two, two inches, it's considered negligence. I found many sections of the sidewalk, just on Fremont, broken, not level. In fact, and I couldn't believe this, but there was a tree stump, 20 inches in diameter, that had grown up past the sidewalk, so it was missing. That's taken a long time to do that. So are we negligent in what we're doing here? Yeah. Is it fixable? Absolutely. So you might want to think about, is the last time we did inspections? And who's following up on it?
Thank you. That was a good comment. Thank you.
Hey, Carl, will you get with him and tell him our sidewalk program later on? Okay, we got one.
Hi, I'm Ben Goodmanson. I currently live in Deweyville, actually, but I, I grew up in Thatcher. I graduated from Bear River. Back in 2021, I was given a really good opportunity to build a dream home through a local contractor here. The location for the house was a spot that I dreamed about since I was a kid, and it was right on the Bear River. Sorry, I might go over three minutes here. I thought this was a dream come true. But it turns out, there was a lot of fraud committed against my family and me during this construction. One of them resulted in really severe water issues. In order to get the permit for my house, the contractor cheated on the water test. He cheated on it because the first test they submitted had failed. After eight months of building my home, it was almost complete. And the contractor allowed us to move in early, telling us he would fix the water problem, but he didn't. The entire water system was not functional. This caused me to be out of water while I was already living in the house. I told the contractor, and he kept making temporary fixes. But he assured me he will officially take care of the problem. To make matters worse, at the time, the contractor was also my employer. And he was also my loan officer for the purchase of my house. He knew this water system was bad, but he insisted that we close on our house anyways. So we did. He assured me again that he would take care of the water situation. As an employee, I felt very trapped with no other options but to trust him, that he would keep his word. And that was June of last year. Seven months later, in December, he still didn't fix the problem, so I was living in it for seven months with a lot of water problems. I confronted him at work. And instead of agreeing to fix it, as he promised, he fired me. I filed a lawsuit against him. And now I'm currently on a temporary water system from a spring. We do have a preliminary injunction protecting our water, just for a limited time. But once it expires, we have no alternative water source. Between me and, me and the contractor, we have drilled five different wells, all of which came back inadequate. The well driller that I hired after John kept failing, excuse me, just said the area was a bad geographical area for water. There should never have been any houses built there in the first place. But they were able to be built because he cheated on the water test to get the permits through. Now I'm living in my dream home with no permanent water solution. I've talked to the Bear River Water Conservatory. They said it could cost me $2 million to bring a water line to my house. I talked to Deweyville, which is where I live, and they said they cannot supply water to the west of the railroad tracks. I also talked to Tremont Public Works. They said that could just cause a lot of legal issues because the house is technically in Deweyville. But there is a Tremont water line that goes right next to my neighbor's house. So today, I'm just proposing is to purchase water from the conservatory and have it supplied to my house through Tremont, through the Tremont City water line that goes close to my house.
Ben, we're going to have to kind of wrap it up, so.
I'm, I'm right at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, this was just a very unexpected situation from my wife and me and my family. And we're just, we're just seeking help. Yeah, that's.
So will you get with our, with, with Carl over here? And let's, you know, if there's, I don't know what. Yeah, and we'll, we'll see what we can get done, you know, under the circumstances and everything. So, but why don't, we, we got to start with Carl. And working with him, then Carl can come back with a proposal. If, if there's, if there is anything that can be done legally and, and to help you out, then, you know, let's, let's start with Carl.
Okay, so I, I did start with Carl, and I believe he's the one who told me to come here and.
Okay, well, so that this is the next step, and so now you can, now you can go back. And, and now Carl has kind of a direction a little bit to, maybe to go with, and, yeah, Carl?
It's sticky. It's a little sticky situation.
Okay.
We're, you know, happy to do what we can, but we need to, there's more discussion.
Okay, that's, that sounds.
Let's have those discussions, then.
Yeah. All right, Ben, thank you. Let's get the discussions going.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period. New council business. Discussion and possible action on appointing an individual to fill the midterm vacancy for council member Lyle Vance on the Tremonton City Council. I kind of went through the instructions in the, in the work session, but I'll reiterate them now. So we, each council member, the, the mayor does not vote on this. It's strictly the council members, we, the current council members. Each one of them have a ballot, and they can make, choose one person. And then they turn the ballots over to Cynthia. She'll count the ballots and tell us how things go. If there happens to be a tie, then we'll go ahead and do the election or do the voting one more time and, and turn them time over to, turn it over to Cynthia. If it continues to be a tie, then we have a coin toss. So that's sort of the process that we'll go through now. And with that, council, time is now yours to fill in your ballots. You can choose one, and then we'll turn them, turn them over to Cynthia, and she'll read them off to us.
Do we play the music?
Do, 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 do. And my understanding is we don't give the count, we just say who the winner was.
We have a majority that voted for one candidate, so tonight we will appoint Brandon Vonck as the next city council member until January.
All right. Very good. Congratulations, Brandon. At this point now, we will swear, let's have Brandon come up. And Brandon, we're going to swear you in.
Nobody tells the new guys they're supposed to bring cookies when they get sworn in. Nobody tells them. I told Bo, and he brought them, though.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, Brandon.
It's my wife that brought the cookies.
I know you brought cookies.
And I want to clarify one thing on the election part.
Brandon?
Congratulations. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Make him a little poster, his name.
You know, the county, each election, each person who's running for a county seat, they are running for that seat. That's not the case in the city here. It will be, you know, it'll just be for the seats that are available, it will be those that have the highest number of votes. So we don't, you're not running for a seat, you and Bo are not in competition for the same seat, if that makes any sense. All right.
Yeah, they are. They're both four-year guys.
That's true.
Yeah, they're both four years, but there's two seats. There's two seats, it's not the same seat.
No.
Yeah.
He won't sit on like your lap or something.
That's good.
Do whatever.
All right. Okay, now, can I, where's that paper at? Oh, right here. Okay, item B, discussion and consideration of appointing two people to be on the nominating commission to help vet nominations for the new Tremontan Justice Court Judge. So, yeah, we have two recommendations. We were thinking of Bill and.
Lindsay.
And Lindsay, okay. Bill and Lindsay would be our two nominations to be on that.
Can you explain what Jim said?
Go ahead.
So Jim Peters from the state contacted me this morning and said we needed to change the language. So there will be five members that serve on that nomination commission, and three of them are from the county, the mayors, and I can't remember the third one. So they are letting Tremont have two because it is our judge, so we will have the majority of that vote. But they're ready to move on to that next step. Brigham's already in the process, and we'll have their person picked by the time ours starts, so we just need to appoint two people to serve on that commission and help interview them and narrow the field, and then it will come back to the mayor for his decision, and he'll bring it to the council for you guys to vote on, our final.
Okay, so Bill Kobabe and Lindsay Nesson will be the two nominees.
I just want to, for the record, note that this is a commission for nomination and that you will ultimately have the final vote on the judge, so, yeah.
Very good. Thank you for that update.
Do we got to approve that, or there's no?
Yeah, discussion and consideration, so we're just going to approve the two nominees.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the two nominees for the Justice Court Judge search.
Okay.
Motion by Wes and seconded by Bo.
Okay, so Brandon, what we do is we just go around, and we'll start here with Blair, and just go around, and then come back to you and then Bo. Oh, it's not, yeah, we just.
Not on this one.
Not on this one, you're right. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you, everybody. Discussion and consideration of appointing Brian Mickelson and Stephanie DeFilippas to the Arts Council. This is something that we've, we're trying to get that Arts Council up and going again, and these are two suggestions, two people that have been contacted, both of them are willing to serve on the Arts Committee and be involved with coming up with projects and arts, ideas, murals and so forth that are necessary for a downtown area and revitalizing downtown. So we're just appointing these two people to serve on the Arts Council. You just need a motion and.
I make a motion, we appoint Brian and Stephanie to the Arts Council.
Second.
Motion by Brett and seconded by Blair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion and possible action on adopting Resolution Number 25-39, reaffirming, amending, and enacting new fines and fees and fines in a schedule entitled the Tremontan City Consolidated Fees and Fines Schedule, including but not limited to EMS fees and sampling fees. Bill, do you want to, do you have anything to, Bill or Jeff?
The EMS fees are updated every year. Shari usually sends them to me, and the state's changed how they do it. They used to send a letter, they don't, they no longer do that, they just update it in the code. So the code's been updated, we just are updating our maximum fine, or our fees that we can charge for the ambulance. And then the sampling fees are some that we pass on to developers and industries, and they have gone up, so we're just recommending that we raise them to.
Sampling.
I can show you. So it's not a huge fee at all, but they have gone up, so we were just updating those fees so that they are current with what we're being charged. And then there is a note that says we'll just update those as they are changed, they won't have to come to the council, so.
Went through those, and I guess I just didn't see the sampling fees, maybe I, a lot of times they're red.
Lab sampling and.
Lab sampling and so forth, okay.
Yep.
Fair enough, okay.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 25-39 for reaffirming the, of enacting the new fees for the EMS and the sampling fees.
Motion by Blair, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded by Brett. Okay, now this one, we'll start with Blair here, and we'll just go around, and you say yes or no.
Blair, yes.
Brett, yes.
Wes, yes.
Now it's your turn.
Brandon, yes.
Bo, yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Discussion and possible action on adopting ordinance Number 25-13, zoning of tax parcels referred to as the LB Land Holding Annexation. Is there any discussion on this? We need to, Jeff, you pretty much gave us everything, do we have any questions for Jeff or Bo or?
There was one point I didn't cover, but as part of the annexation agreement, the development agreement will be required with any development that happens on Brody's parcel, and that will come back through to the city council. So that will be the document that the DRC and LB Land Holdings works out for the development, and it will have a chance to come through. So that document will answer, should, answer any remaining questions that are detailed.
We won't bring it for you unless it's completely ready, and all the Ts dotted, not Is crossed, and, oh wait, no, Ts crossed.
That sounds more correct.
And we'll make sure that gets to you in an approvable form so that you can have confidence in it, and we'll even have our attorney looking over to make sure that it meets all those requirements that way, so, yeah, it will be a complete document when you see it.
So which one's the first one? Which one's the 13?
It's this one.
It's this whole thing.
The whole thing?
It's everything that you see colored up there is 211 acres, literally north of 211 acres.
Okay, I see, I'm just confused on, the next thing's the zoning part.
This is the zoning.
Yeah, they're both zoning.
They're two separate zones.
Once the zoning's in place, we're able to start working with Brody on the development approval process, but this is the last horse before the cart can start moving because it's hard to start designing a development with a moving target of, well, what am I designing towards? What zoning regulations do I need to design to?
So in that process of the development agreement, things like the Woods Event Center, as you're looking through the development plan on the R18, you could pad, so if there were, so R18 means that you could put, if there were density, as was proposed, a little higher density near the cement plant, for example, that could create space down by the woods, et cetera, et cetera, right? So there's a lot of flexibility in the planning that can take place to be able to take the things that we've heard and make sure that we're addressing.
But in those protections.
Well, and even with the R18 zone, you could still do that of having 8,000 square foot lots, and then as you got closer to existing residents, 8,000 is a minimum lot size. So even under the zoning, if he wanted to create, you know, 20,000 square foot lots, it's still permitted, that's still an option. 8,000 is just the smallest he would be able to go in this lot size. So he could even look, if he just chose to keep the single-family housing, there's still flexibility to put larger lots along existing residents to kind of buffer between, you know, more city-type-looking dense development and more agricultural rural-type lots that would be, you know, half acre or acre.
You know, that really makes sense for both sides of that particular interaction, having a buffer between maybe a loud party at a venue versus, you know, someone that just wants to have a quiet evening in their backyard, you want a little separation both directions on that, so that buffer makes sense for a lot of reasons.
And that's like 38 acres, is that what, I heard that part, the blue part?
That's the blue part, yes, sir.
So is there a, there's got to be something for some kind of a park or?
Yeah, there will need to be some form of stormwater facility, and to, one of the public comments, it's important with those to be able to have access to an overflow so that if it does get more water than designed to, let me back up. City standards are that you have to have a stormwater facility that captures the 100 year storm, which statistically is the storm that has a 1% chance of happening. Now, as all good statistics, that doesn't mean that once it happens, Mother Nature goes, you've got it for this 100 years, you're good. The key is being able to design an overflow that goes into a public right-of-way or into an, a system, and that's a requirement on all new, on all storm drain facilities now is illustrating where that emergency overflow goes. And I think that personally, for my professional, I think that's where some of our existing ponds have had some shortcomings, is not having that emergency overflow be into a public right-of-way where it can flow away.
And do we know where the lines are right now, the drain?
The historic.
The tile lines.
Our city engineer has a map of where they approximately are, but I've never seen, at least personally, I've never seen any data that, you know, has geospatial.
We actually have, should have a copy of that plan. The NRCS several years ago did a study, and they did this whole valley and identified where the field drains are, and we just need to get access to that. I think the NRCS will have that.
They have it with, do they have it as like an actual, like engineered, like measured distance?
Yeah, yeah, it was an actual engineering study, so.
I want to say too that a lot of these things are a ground truth kind of a situation, so if you're in the process of digging in a new line or putting in a road or something, and you come across one of these things, you have to mitigate for it, there's no question. There will have to be some sort of way to handle that, and we'll make sure that that gets put in the development agreement as well, that if they come across either marked or unmarked these clay tile pipes, that they will be taken care of in an appropriate way so that the flow keeps going. So I've got a bunch of questions that we can discuss, okay? Should we have the finance, we talked a little bit about the financial part of it when you were sitting up here, and I appreciated that, and the question was, we're not quite sure how we're going to finance this into the future, so I'm a little concerned that we're making some decisions now without having all the answers that we need right now. The tiles are another thing that, we do need some more information on it, so I'm a little bit concerned, are we a little bit presumptuous in making the decision without knowing that those tiles are going to be, could those tiles be something that could prevent us from doing anything in that area? I don't know, you know, and so I don't have the answer to that. So what do you guys think about that?
Well, I think the tiles, you know, definitely the tiles are important in that area, especially because it is in a high-water table area, so the tiles, I know the study is done because I was part of it, and so I think that we just need to get that, you know, really what we're talking about here is now just the annexation, we're not talking about the development agreements or anything else, but that still is an important thing we need to make sure that we have, and I can get with NRCS and we can get a copy of that.
You said annexation, boss, I think you meant zoning.
Zoning.
Were the annexations already?
Yeah, the zoning, excuse me, we're just talking about the zoning right now, so, you know, I was looking at the word annexation up there when I said that. We need to address that, that is a very critical issue because, you know, we're already seeing some septic tanks in the Freeman Estates causing some issues up there, so, I mean, the issue is very real, and we, and as we get going here, that would be part of the development agreement that we would have to address and make sure that those tile lines are not severed and don't function anymore.
If I may speak to the question of legacy costs associated with additional infrastructure, there is no question that this would be an ongoing legacy cost associated with any new infrastructure that goes in, whether it's new roads, whether it's a lift station, storm drains, and this is one of the reasons why residential development is expensive and never pays for itself. That's why you have to have a commercial center and other sources of revenue to help offset expenses that, and the services that residential areas demand. And there's a balance there, right? I mean, we've got to find the balance between having the revenue to pay for the services that are demanded and required, and the maintenance of those things once they're in place, and the revenues to, the expenses that are required there. So it's a matter of, yeah, how do we pay for the thing? It's a real question, and I think it's a valid question, and I think it's one that we'll have to look at going forward. Well, I guess my question is, I think we need to look at it before we go forward, because how do we make a decision on something, and now all of a sudden we've obligated the citizens and the city council into a decision, and now we're raising taxes or we're doing something, and the city council's the people that did this. You're absolutely right. And so I don't think we hold them accountable until we have that kind of information in front of us. I'm not trying to push this off. Right, no, I know. I just want good information to be making a good decision. And like I said, I think that's a great question and a good concern to have. And I, like I said, I think that's a great question and a and a good concern to have.
And then another.
What does that look like? Can I ask? What what's the timeframe to be able to get the cost? Of this regional station and the design and.
And ongoing maintenance.
And ongoing maintenance that it's gonna cost us so that we can capital plan for that.
So the maintenance costs, we wouldn't capital plan for that. That would be part of our O and M budget. And so. That's not a a capital. It's a different pool of, so we would use tax dollars and things like that to pay for that. Just like we do for the roads, maintenance, and and we have enterprise funds that would help to cover some of those costs. We'd have to look at that going forward and decide if if we need an increase in our rates that we charge for sewer connections and or. Those fees like we just amended and adopted just barely. To to make sure that the whole system gets paid for, but this would be part of the system. It wouldn't be, well, we need. Another X amount because of this. It would be the system itself collectively and combined is is costing us whatever amount.
How much are the fees, you know, the the enterprise funds? You know, would, in my mind, would the enterprise funds be the O and M for the lift station and? And all of that kind of thing, or is that, am I thinking correctly on that, or is that something separate?
No, you're right. The the tax dollars and and then the enterprise funds, enterprise funds can be also be used for capital projects as well, so. It's one of those things where you can kind of move it around a little bit. The real question is, and and this is always the question when it comes to any kind of rezone or development like this. Is this the right time and is this the right place? That's, those are the two questions you're answering tonight. The the technical questions of whether or not the expenses are there, or whether or not it pencils for the developer. At a certain density level, those are kind of ancillary questions to. What it is that we're trying to do on the ground right now, and that is, do we want this area to develop? Like it's shown on the application and on the map.
It's gonna be hard to provide maintenance costs for something that hasn't been. Hi, Carl. Like, it's gonna, we don't know what the lift station even looks like. We don't know what it's, any of the valve, we don't like.
And I I'm more concerned about the tax burden or the. The legacy on the citizens in the future, and so by bringing this in, are we going to up everyone's rates by a couple dollars? And everyone's gonna carry this, and if that's the case, they need to know that.
Well, we don't know that yet to provide that info. How much is it gonna cost for you to make?
Decision without knowing that information. That's my concern.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't have annexed, correct? We're already ahead of it. I mean, really? So. I mean.
And again, we're, this is, we're just looking at the zoning at this point, the and the. The part about the legacy costs and everything else, that all comes together when we start to get the. Development agreements and everything in place. That, in my mind, that's when that starts to come together. Right now, all all we're doing is we're just looking at zoning and the zoning of this area.
Will you guys say something?
I just wanted to answer the timeframe type question and also tie it in with the plans that we've made, so. Last few months, we've been working on budget. We did budget funds to look at impact fees and those those kind of things that. That we're at a point where we need to take six months. So I I feel like the answer to the to the timeframe question, it's like a six month. Process to me to look at where we're at with updating, knowing that we've got. New infrastructure coming in and and we are talking about new infrastructure, so we need to update those impact. Fees and those plans that are associated with it, and once those are adopted, that's the decision making. That we already have looked at, and I think that's where we're at, where we need to need to be. Updating those plans and those impact fees, and that takes about six months to do that. And then we know. What, then we have a basis for making these kind of decisions.
I would say those impact fees probably would be a little bit higher, knowing that part of it involves, that your system involves a lift station. Would be my guess, because you've expanded the network, and so your level of service is gonna be reasonably higher because. Part of your system now has a lift station in it. So as you're sitting here going, okay, what's the per unit cost for new residents to? Keep up the level of service that your sewer system has, if that system has a lift station onto it, the the impact fees take that into account. Whereas if you did the impact fees on the current system and then you build a lift station into it, you've probably now. You've probably increased the value of the system, but not the value that the impact fees are trying to get to, if that makes sense.
But the impact fees would be citywide, right?
Yeah, well, it'd be, it'd be any, the impact fees would be for any new development that goes anywhere in the city. But what I'm saying is, if you get new impact fees, but then you have a huge capital project that expands your system. Those impact fees don't reflect what the unit cost is to keep up that system that's had a new improvement to it.
You you stated that that Brigham has three of these? I'm sorry if I missed this. Do we have any?
No, this is our first. I can go down, I I don't think there's a municipality from the state border down to. Utah Lake that doesn't have, probably doesn't have one, or a sewer district that doesn't have at least one. It's just what happens because you can't always plan that your service area is downhill, that everything gets downhill. Especially when you start talking about areas like Farmington and Kay'sville that are now building out to the lake, there's no way they put a treatment plant. That many miles away from where their city was and saying, okay, we're eventually gonna flow everything to the lake. So I'm, if you go Plain City, I think has a disproportionate amount, almost a Texas amount, according to. Bill of lift stations for how, because they're flat.
North of Brumman has them. They've had them for years on different spots when they put sewer treatment plants in, so.
Any other comments?
Okay, all right. Sorry. And I I I went and visited with citizens today and talked to them, and I'm just trying to get out what people are asking me, and so I'm asking questions, and that's. Up to us as the city council to discuss them, so. Now leave it, that's what it is. School and growth, I went to a board meeting the other day and. I finally saw the light that. We may not have control over the school board's decisions to raise taxes, but we have control somewhat. Over the growth that helps make us build more schools. So we have an indirect. Effect on schools and 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 I and I saw that and and I feel it. Along with that comment, and we have a cottage subdivision going in over by the old hospital. It's gonna be a lot of homes, six hundred homes?
Two hundred and two.
That's the whole subdivision? Okay, two hundred and two over there, and that's right, right over by the old hospital, and so those are the old, this cottage home. Model, and so, you know, my question is, is this what we want to do out there also, or do we have a model already? In place and an area where these cottage homes are going in, and we want to sit back and kind of watch that happen. Now, in our.
So if I can interrupt. Those cottage homes are four to five thousand square foot, you, you, per lot. These are eight thousand, so eight thousand is what's in Archibald's. That's our, that's the old part of Archibald Estates. Those are not cottage, that zoning right now is not cottage homes.
Okay, I was just going off of your comment, you said cottage homes, and so that took me down there, yeah. That's that's all. Okay, now, one of the things that they brought up in Planning Commission, and there was quite a debate in the Planning Commission over this, but. In our general use plan, the land use and zoning. The number one priority is preserve and enhance Fremont's agricultural character, peaceful lifestyle and rural atmosphere. Using carefully considered zoning ordinances, preserving environmentally sensitive lands. And providing high quality, open space. The third one was, use careful consideration zoning ordinances to ensure the compatibility. Compatibility of adjacent land uses and apply appropriate buffers and transitions between conflicting uses, and so. There was quite a debate and the 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 vote passed by one. On this point that we have a lot of RR one and we have a lot of land uses out there. But are we sticking to our plan of what we wanted to do in the future? And then is this a time and is this a place to make a change to that? To that direction that they've brought up in, that we've set in this twenty twenty three plan?
I would state in that plan, the long term, and we talked about this the last night at the town hall, the long term vision for this, most of this acreage was industrial.
Okay, and that that's the other thing.
Because once we zone it tonight, you don't go in and put improvements in and then expect someone to come in and tear all those improvements out and put industrial.
And that's fine. I I feel like we're throwing that industrial thing over their head and making them feel.
I I don't, I don't agree with that, cause it says on a twenty to thirty year plan, it has industrial on this plot. So that is the long term vision that was set for that. I I do.
No, it was with the integrated land use plan.
I'm I'm referencing the land use plan that it does in the long term reference, this is the transition plan over to that, so. It says on the twenty to thirty year long term plan, it has industrial on this.
Okay, so we would change that use.
So, yeah, that that's what this would, we would pivot more to a residential rather than industrial use. Unless I'm reading the land use plan inappropriately, in the short term, it's not, it is more. But in the long term, it shows industrial on the, on that that plot for over the long term of it, so.
So this is the, this is the classic conundrum here with, when it comes to land development. And we try to set up plans that are aspirational, and we try to. Have great values and and policies and principles that guide us as we make these decisions. But when it comes down to specific properties and decisions about how those zone changes take place and how they impact the rural. Which is a word I can't say, the rural feel that we all love and that we moved here for. And that we want to foster. How do we, how do we hold on to that? And if I hadn't, if I had an answer to that, I would write a book and retire, because every community in America. Wants to hold on to those agrarian roots. There is no question. Half of the cities in America are five thousand people or less. They all want to hold on to that cool, amazing character that makes them so unique and special. But they all face the same challenge, and it is this exact pressure to develop and grow.
Well, in in our land use plan, that those paragraphs you read conflict with a twenty to thirty year vision of industrial. That's that's where I do agree with that even the plan itself has some holes in it. Which it was done the best possible way by people with good intentions, doing their best they can, but. It it, those those two paragraphs do conflict in that area. That's what makes this decision hard, is we have to have a good excuse or reason. Why to transition away from the long term vision of the land use plan, and the land use plan itself has conflicting statements. That that's what makes this property hard for me.
Yeah, and then and then it goes back to the discussion we had several weeks ago about our general plan and how outdated that is, and we need. To update that so that we have better direction as to how the city's gonna move as a whole. And so, and I think that comment was brought up a little bit earlier. I understand, and Blair brought this up, this is annexed and we need to make some decisions. I'm just bringing out some points. The other thing is, on Iowa string. We're not gonna widen Iowa string at all, are we? We're we're not touching Iowa string, are we?
In what, in? What timeframe?
It's a, it's a question of, it is, it's a question of timing, and there will be a traffic impact study that's done. As part of this. As part of this development, yeah, and it will, if if it, if there is an indication. That there is an impact related to the number of units that are going in on this property and the anticipated. Impact on the existing system, we would have them develop it out to the point where that impact is mitigated. If it can't be mitigated, they don't get additional units. That's the long and short of it. Now. There's a whole list of of things that need to, that are involved in these kinds of questions, the the traffic impact studies. Look at everything from car trips per day to the the carrying capacity of the roads and the level of service that the council determines is. The appropriate level of service. It's all goes into this big calculation and comes out what is required. A lot of times. It's an additional twelve feet of roadway, so you get a center turn lane and turn pockets so that you can turn right in and and. Turn out and and you don't impede traffic. Those are, those are things that can and and should take place. The other thing that we we have in our back pocket is the master. Transportation master plan, thank you, and that indicates what this road is supposed to look like when it grows up, and. That, when we bring that online, and we have brought it online, but when we bring that to bear on on this development. We look at the road width and what it's supposed to look like, and we, if we're not gonna develop it out now, what the, what happens is that that money goes into an escrow. And when the prop, when the road does get developed out, we pull that escrow, we add some city money. But also whatever else is driving the development in the area and say, okay, it's time to to pay up on this. So. All of these things come to bear, and these are questions that are are great questions and will be answered as we go through the subdivision process. There's nothing saying that even though we changed the zone to R one eight, that this property stays as a thirty eight. Point something acre lot with one house on it. He's not gonna do that, but there's nothing legal requiring him to put in a maximum number of units. The only constraint is, can he get water and sewer? Can he get appropriate road access? What are the other constraints? Can he have drainage on the property? All of those other practical concerns are are real and natural constraints on. The amount of development that goes on on the property. But legally, he has one lot, and therefore he is entitled to one unit on that lot, well, and an ADU.
Back to Brett's question about.
Here, if I, if I can for a second. Billy used a phrase, a turn pocket, which I, some people may understand, some people may not. The one that I know of that pops to mind that may, people may understand is on Iowa string and six hundred south is a turn pocket. So it's where the southbound lane merges over and it creates a left turn lane to go on to six hundred south. That's a turn pocket, and that has to meet national traffic safety standards, and so it's not just that magically twelve feet of asphalt goes out, it's that. Traffic wise, he actually designed, you design an actual spot where the asphalt will jog out. To meet the speed limit, so that there's a safe turn lane there for people who are going left. And that probably will happen, I mean, not probably, likely will happen at at Iowa string and a thousand nor, and ten thousand north, but. Probably also wherever he has an access going on to Iowa string.
How does this, so Iowa string is a county road?
It was, it's ours now.
It's ours now. When we annexed, it became our road, okay.
Sidewalks, what, what phase of the development agreement is that figured out? So that we don't run into.
No, immediately it's figured out, and we're we're limited as as to what we can require a developer to do off site. If there are things that are required to get water and sewer, for example, onto the property, that's obviously going to be required. But for a while, there probably will be sidewalk to nowhere in in the in the very short term. Until the city either decides to connect from A to B or development marches out that way and fills in some of these gaps. The city can require sidewalk and improvements on their property, but off site improvements are a much more difficult thing to. Require. They're called exactions, and on the property again and related to the development, exactions are expected and. are expected and totally legal. Off-site, it's a little bit more of a nuanced question.
It's going to be tough with the bridge.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Sidewalk is the bridge.
Yep, that's a big.
There's nothing, no sidewalks between Main Street.
But there are other options. They could do a pedestrian bridge off to one side of the bridge or something like that so that it's not the roadway itself that gets people off of that.
And if I can say this in the interest of the developers hearing this, but, um, as I sat there walking today, I get, I got thinking, I wouldn't want my kids walking on Iowa string.
No way.
Even with a sidewalk. It just doesn't feel safe. I'd like to get them off of there and get a different way into town. Now, we've, we've talked about this and we've got our trail system that's going in place from high school all the way out to the freeway and can include their area. And I know they're interested in doing that, but I think, um, we need to make sure that part of the, the, the development plan includes a trail system that gets our kids and people who want to take bikes into town an alternative way. And then, and then the other suggestion I may make is the one road in Freeman, Freeman Farms, is that what it's called?
Freeman.
Freedom?
Freeman.
Freeman. As it turns up at the very end, that butts into your area. But anyway, I, I believe we could set a trail. We may be able to, the landowners have told us that we could.
Oh, they've, they've been pretty straightforward about that's not an option. I've talked to them multiple times.
I just talked to them today and they said it was an option, so, okay? But, um, anyway, we may be able to find a way to get that up and, and, and try to tie in those, that area into a trail system of some kind. Yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to get that little plug in there. And then that goes to, uh, Mrs. Appling's concerns about safety and sidewalks and all that, which I think are valid, valid concerns.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Can, can you clarify one question for me?
Sure.
I want to make sure you understand this. When you said this, you, you stated that with impact fees and with legacy costs, that this particular zoning would not be financially beneficial to our community.
No residential development.
Ever?
Now, I, I say never, once you get to a certain level of multifamily and higher density, because the units per linear foot of frontage start to pencil out a little better, but you're talking 10 to 20 units per acre. This is like four or five. It, it just doesn't work. The reason why is you gotta, you gotta add in all the costs, not just the infrastructure costs for maintenance, but also the police, the fire, all of the parks and rec, all of the other services that the city provides cost each homeowner. And it's, it's, uh, the return on it is about, it's, it's like 95 cents on the dollar. And the, the way you make up the difference is through your, um, commercial and, uh, industrial and those other zones that, that don't have the same kind of impact on the system.
And you don't get those amenities until you do this first?
It's, it's a both and. Yes, sir.
I think the general public does not understand that.
Well, it's, it's one of the reasons why annexing residential areas into the city is not done for financial reasons. You don't do it because you think you're going to make a ton of money off of it. You do it because you want the control over how the development looks. You want the city infrastructure out there, including water, sewer and all the other things that we have control over, make sure it's a healthy, safe environment. And also because we're already providing services out to this area anyway. We're the, if you call 911, our guys are rolling on it and they should. We're, we're, that's just the way we're going to be, but we don't get any money off of any of those calls. Well, ambulance a little bit.
But as our community grows, then we have more folks that want to bring businesses to our community.
That's right. And, um, you know, you gotta have a workforce. You gotta have a workforce that can afford to live where they work. You gotta have people who, um, have kids and want to stay. And that's, that's how you build a community.
I would say this too. Having started being, I mean, being part of the Main Street Steering Committee and, and the focus the city has on Main Street now, the majority of those business owners are local. We don't have many business owners that are from, uh, I'd say south of Brigham City. And they may own franchises for national chains and that's their ability, but most of our businesses on Main Street are local owners. And if we want those, those spaces to be filled by new entrepreneurs, we need to have affordable housing so that they have enough funding then to, to go invest in becoming a local business owner. I mean, Tremont's been pushing for this with Utopia and with the connectivity and of trying to be a spot where, with the Economic Development Board, we can help create startup businesses.
I think where I'm struggling, I'm new, I'm not trying to take up time.
You didn't, you haven't just dove in and.
But we, but we, we talked about how expensive impact fees are. I'm more, I'm struggling with. How do we afford to do this? Can we afford to do this?
Can we afford not to?
Good question. But based on the, the budget that we went over last month, it, it seemed pretty doom a gloom. It seemed like we were in some trouble. Maybe I misread that, but it seemed like things were really tight. And maybe I'm wrong. I just.
They're tight.
I don't want to get.
They're tight, you're not wrong.
Elected on my first day with this decision.
You're right into the fire, aren't you?
I know why Jax didn't show up. I mean, he's sitting up here, he's a shoe-in.
The impact fees on Freeman Farms, can we talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
There's, there's, can, there's discussion with developer around those, right?
Yeah.
Answer those questions.
Yeah, there were, in the pre-annexation agreement, we had come to an agreement on stuff there, but when you guys decided not to take in the pre-annexation agreement, all those went by, by the way. So there's no agreements at this point. Uh, we did talk about, you know, helping out in that regard.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, let's have you come up and, and so we can hear, everybody can hear. Especially those home.
Yeah, so we had, uh, in the pre-annexation agreement, um, that was the agreement that we discussed, you know, what we were going to do if we annexed in and we came into the zone that we were planning on, which was the RM8. This is our, our 18, just so you're aware, we were planning on a different zone, it's a higher density zone. And, uh, because of the, you know, challenges of the community, we, we, they're concerned, we, we decided to, to drop it down to the R18. Um, but our agreement, you know, was canceled once you guys canceled the pre-annexation agreement when we came in. And so, um, we were planning on forward-fronting those costs for them, the $17,000, uh, in return, you know, we would put that in and then we'd be reimbursed for those as, as we connected through. So it's.
Is that something you're still planning to do or that's off the table now?
It all depends on what we get as a zone. I, I have no idea right now until, I mean, if we can get an R18, then we plan on doing it. But, but if we can't, then we can't, I don't know where we're at. I, I can't make a decision based on.
Oh, I guess that's my question. If we do the R18, then you still honor that.
I'm good with it. I will still honor everything in the pre-annexation agreement. That was what I had said. But if we drop down to R110, I think you and I had a conversation about this, that I can't, I can't guarantee anything at that point because now I've lost density and I can't pencil things. And so that's just the reality of it.
That, that's, that's a big deal for me because I, I think them, I don't, if, if I had to do an impact fee for the house I built five years ago, they don't, but I don't think they should have to, but if they can trade that water share for that.
Yeah, and we, I, I.
We already paid for the water share.
Right, and we, sorry.
But you, but you won't need the water share.
But they can sell it for thirty-five thousand.
We should be able to sell it at full price. We shouldn't get half of it taken away to pay an impact P费 for a house that we already paid everything off.
But you didn't pay.
It was our understanding that that would be what would happen, that he would absorb the cost.
But I thought it was in lieu of the water shares.
No. In fact, the only way Jeff asked in the meeting right out, if we pay your impact fee, will you now sign? And more people agreed to sign and that's how he got the signatures he needed.
So that, that is in, that is correct there. That, that's how, I mean, a lot of people were having concerns with that. And so we, we opted to take that on, um, so that they would feel like they could grab that 35,000 for selling their share. So that's where we're at.
This is the West Green Water we're talking about.
That is West Green Water.
So you're, you're just going to pay that and they, and they sell their water shares wherever they want?
Well, I told them I have got buyers that are willing to buy them. There, there's a huge list of 400 potentials buyers on those. And so we, I told them I'd facilitate the buyer for them or if they want to sell it on their own, they can sell it on their own. So just to help them out. So I was willing to help them out.
Someone asked a question today, which I thought was a valid question. They said. What they understood was that most cities do not. Apply the impact fee to homes that are already built when they come into an annexation. But ours is one of the, and this really isn't a question for you. This is a question for, for discussion, but, um, so why are we applying an impact fee to these people? I know there's an impact on the system, but when, it doesn't sound like it's common practice or am I incorrect?
So I brought that to the council and talked about it and you guys said no, not to do that.
Not to do what?
Not to waive their impact fees.
Okay, so couldn't we talk about it?
Well, I did with you.
Well, we can talk about it.
We can talk about it now and again.
But the, the, it's kind of a mixed bag, honestly. Some people, some communities look at the, uh, impact of a new home on their system and say that is an impact and we're going to charge an impact fee. Some people maybe massage it a little bit down saying, yeah, you're already on a system, so it's not going to be the same as a full impact fee. But there is still an impact and we're acknowledging that a new home on our system has a $17,000 impact. We'll, we'll kind of meet you somewhere in the middle. And then some say, you know what? We're just glad you're here. Uh, here's your $17,000 waiver. The rest of the taxpayers will pay that for you. That's a, that's what you're saying though, is we're, we're acknowledging that a home has a 17, every additional home, every other additional home, whether it's brand new or been on a system, has a $17,000 impact on our system. By inviting other people to come in that have their homes already built and waiving that, you're saying, welcome in, the rest of us are going to pay for that impact that your home is now having on our system. And there's an equity question there. There's a, a whole host of questions there. And we discussed that. Jeff's right. We discussed all of those at length in January or something like that.
I just, sometimes I feel really demeaned by, by the way I'm treated sometimes up here and I, and I don't, I don't, I don't deserve that and we don't. So I would ask for a little bit more respect when it comes to.
Well, I'm sorry if that was disrespectful. I didn't mean any disrespect at all. I sincerely apologize.
Mike, uh, one of the questions I guess I have is, uh, are there, was there a mitigation discussion for the impact fee on Freeman Farms? Was, I, I guess maybe I'm a little bit, I, I thought there was some sort of a mitigation.
So we were, we were, uh, in the pre-annexation agreement, it stated that we would cover the cost upfront for them and in return, I think a percentage of it would come back.
Yeah, we were, we were going to vet it out in the development agreement, but.
So we'd have to discuss that.
Brody agreed to cover those costs, um, to help so that we could get the support to bring them in because what I, as a city planner, what I really didn't want is them to not be attached to city infrastructure that's going right past their houses. And it's very uncommon to be working with a developer in my experience that is willing to help existing residents. I've done, done work for developers that say, this is my property, this is the risk I'm already taking on to, to develop my 38 acres and that's it. And Brody's one of the first I've ever met that says, yeah, I can, I'll, I can make that pencil. So I even told members when I was meeting with them at Freeman Farms of procrastinating this doesn't guarantee that another developer comes down the road saying, I'll help. And then the city gets to go in and do all of this. And the hard part is without taking their houses into consideration, sewer becomes a real, gravity lines become a real struggle. And so it's worth as your, as Brody's engineering firm, whoever he's hiring, is going through and designing all of this, if they have to adjust the sewer to help take in Freeman Farms because all of those houses are at different elevations, it's a lot easier to design a lift station knowing that that was taken into consideration rather than ignoring it and hoping down the road that we don't have a small lift station for 20 lots because it, this rail line was too shallow.
So, did you, did you have any other comments?
Not yet.
Not yet. So I guess we, we kind of come, I mean, we've talked, we've talked a lot of, a lot of things here that I think are really, have to do with a development agreement. And, um, I guess I just want to bring everybody back to, uh, what we're actually have on the table right now is just, uh, accepting the zoning for these parcels. And, uh, then when we get to the point where we need to go through, I mean, all of these questions that Brett had and everybody else, these are really, really good questions that have to be dealt with. But, uh, right now it's, now, right now we're talking about zoning and, uh, agreeing to, uh, to this proposition that these are the, this is the zoning, uh, for this, for this annexation. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Can I make a final comment?
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be final.
We're going to, the mayor is setting up to, to take a vote, so it's final for this item of business.
I, I would support the idea to identify what, how it's going to be annexed because again, I, I think I've expressed concern over, over the financial plans and I want to reiterate, I think that's like a six-month process. But it's necessary to that process to know what the zoning is. And so that, if that helps.
Yeah.
For this decision, that, that helps us in our decision-making.
Well, it, it gives us a chance to move forward now and, and, uh, start with the, the next part, the development agreements. And, and that's where the meat and potatoes, in my mind at least, that's where the meat and potatoes are in, in, uh, going forward, so.
So let me ask this question, Mayor.
Sure.
May I?
Sure.
By setting the zoning at R18, we as a city council are not obligating ourselves. I, I'm, I know this, I'm just reiterating this, okay? We're not setting ourselves up that this is what we're doing. We'll still be able to get the information, the impacts, how much it's going to cost. And if we decide at that point that this is just not the right timing, what then?
So, um, and I, I want to apologize again, Brett. I, I really truly meant no disrespect. And if I came across as disrespectful, I.
It wasn't you.
Well, I, I want to apologize for myself. So, um, the, the, the short answer is these are the constraints that the developer takes on when the developer buys a piece of property. There are risks involved and the costs are going up by the minute as we're sitting here discussing it. He's thinking, I don't know, the mayor and I talked about this earlier, I don't know how they sleep at night, for real. They are mortgaged out to their eyeballs and I, I couldn't do it. I have full respect for developers. Who do it right. And if they're doing it right, they're not sleeping well at night. Cause they're, they're mortgaged to the hilt and, uh, every minute that we spend discussing this is costing him money. And I, I just want to acknowledge that. He has never intimated that he wanted us to hurry up the process that we're costing him money. I just want to be aware of that myself. So I have that urgency and that, that compassion. There is a point though, where it starts to not pencil and the development can't take place. And then this developer would look at the property and say, this is not what I got into this for. It's too expensive. The lift station is costing me whatever it costs. And if I can't get that out of the homes that I hope to build, both in number and quantity and quality and price value and all of those things, it doesn't pencil for me. I'm going to have to choose something else. And whether that's to sell it off to someone else who can come in and try, uh, or whether it's, uh, I don't know, something else creative is going to have to happen. What this does for us tonight is, is a couple of things. If, if the council decides to vote this way, it, it establishes a base density on the property, which is a number of units that this property would be entitled to ask for, okay? At, at about five units per acre, which is 8,000 into 43, 560, it gives you about five units per acre. That's, um, and it's roughly 40 acres, you're, you're looking at roughly 200 homes, okay? That's the number that he starts with. That's his legal entitlement on this property. That's the maximum number of units he could expect. Okay, whatever that calculation is, I'm just using around numbers. Whatever that calculation is, I'm just using around numbers. It's not 200, it's something less than that. But 200 is, is an easy number. Then if the developer chooses, this is at his discretion, to ask for an additional overlay on top of this, the PUD, that he could get density bonuses of additional units up to what, 50% Jeff? Yeah, 50%. So we, there could be a total maximum legally allowed number of units of.
300.
300. Now, there is also a provision in the PUD. If these are affordable homes, they don't count against that maximum density up to an additional.
So I'd be careful because we've used affordable to talk about that your standard group could afford it.
Less expensive.
What do you mean? What Bill's getting at is that we have a provision in the PUD that homes designated and deed restricted, which is means real estate and, and a housing group gets involved to meet moderate income housing standards is defined by the state, that density does not count it towards, against his entitled units that Bill has roughed out for everyone. So just that clarification. The hard part with that is up here in Boxcelar County, we don't have a housing authority that oversees those deed restrictions. It's something we'd like to work with, but there's not many overall throughout the state. And it's, it's, so it's a provision we've put in, but it's not something that we've really heard a lot about from developers.
It's, it's something that may or may not be of value to the developer. And we just want to make that available to them as a tool. Um, and it also helps us meet our state requirements for, uh, planning for affordable housing. All that to say, in, in exchange for the additional density that between the, the 200 and the 300, the developer would give us open space, trails, um, other, other parks and other kind of fun things that are over and above what is required on just a base level development. Make it nice, make it look nice, and we're going to give you some additional homes. And then it really starts to pencil for the developer because, you know, um, those things are nice. They help sell his product, but also the additional density starts to make it a little, a lot more profitable for the developer. And the city gets some nicer homes and some nicer amenities on the property. That's the development agreement process. That's at the developer's discretion. Right now, if you give the zoning as requested, the base density is established at R18, five units per acre. That's what we're working with.
And so the, um, let's see, the, the yellow, is that Harris Enterprises?
Yes.
Uh, they have been reached out to, they agreed to the R110?
Um, I believe so.
Something we're just, how does that work? Well, and not, maybe you can just answer for the, I'm talking, I know the R1, RR1s are already established. They're there already, but the R110 and the R120 and the mixed use, are they, they've all been reached out? Do they know what this zoning is?
When I, I haven't talked to the Andersons about the zoning. What I was trying to do is as, as you get closer to the annexation boundary to have it be less dense. Um, so R120 being, because anyway, I don't know when the Andersons are going to go or are the Harrises honestly, because they have a lot of, um, other private issues that don't need to come to light in a, in a city council meeting.
Yeah.
I, I had recommended these zonings because it, one, I felt the R120 buffered the existing, the fact that that's the end of our annexation boundary. That should generally be where we would want to see li- the lower density. The R110 I thought would be complementary visually and, and matching with the land use plan of having generally low to medium density housing here. So, um, the Harris Enterprises too, and we were looking at this as part of the super master plan. I believe all of their property there highlighted in yellow can make it back to the lift station. But from Iowa string going west, you start getting a natural grade to Salt Creek. And so there's a potential that even all of that yellow doesn't quite gravity. Now that's the great part about some of the PUD and some other development stuff is we can look at just having them develop what can gravity and that's their choices as property owners. But where we know that this is going to be, I didn't want Brody's development to just look so out of place with the five units an acre. If everything goes down to two or less, it's going to become exceedingly apparent how dense, how much denser that looks than surrounding. So I thought the R110 would be a nice grad- gradation into getting into town.
So tonight is just the R18 that we're.
It's all of it.
We're doing all of it, okay.
So, uh, uh, so I, if you'll clarify for me, please, um, the Harrises and the one on the, the R120 down there, do those landowners, I, I didn't get your answer.
I didn't talk.
About it or not?
I didn't talk to them after setting this, but in the discussions I had with them as part of the annexation, they felt comfortable with it.
They've been, they've been talked to.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say they've, I haven't talked to them since the planning commissioner recommended this, but as we were having discussions around the annexation, they were just okay to have it be part of the city.
But I want to be clear too, that a, a zone change, especially at this level, is, is really kind of a placeholder for some of these properties, because, um, they may come in and request a different zone at another time. Um, if so, then they'll have to do all of the rest of the stuff that's associated with that. And we can approve it or not. But, um, this, this difference of zones is a, is a good transition. And as Jeff points out, between the, the extremely rural and, and wide open spaces that are to the south, towards a, a higher density in town. And it's, it just makes, from a planning standpoint, it, it makes logical sense that way.
Okay, all right. Uh, are there any, council, do you have any other questions or comments on, uh, on this? On this ordinance here, the, uh, annex, are the ordinance 25-13? Hearing no, no additional, uh, comments or questions. Uh, I propose that we, uh, go ahead with the, uh, the vote on the ordinance. Uh, discussion and possible action on adopting ordinance number 25-13. Zoning of tax parcels referred to as the LB Land Holdings Annexation. We've had a long discussion, discussion on this and hopefully we got our questions answered. Again, this, we're talking about zoning only at this point, so council?
I don't have all the answers yet, so mine's, I'm going to be a nay on this. So if someone wants to do it, they can, but I'm not quite ready.
Would you, would you, would you be proposing that, that it be tabled? Until further information is gathered or?
I'm concerned about those two landowners that I, I would feel more comfortable if they were talked to and we had, I mean, Jeff said we had their approval, but it'd really be nice if we had it in writing or something. Says, hey, we're, we're good with this move. I know that we're setting the baseline, but, but it's not fair to, let's say the Harrises. We put it out at R110 and then they decide later, oh, we want an R120. And then they have to go through this whole process. We ought to just talk to them and get it set up as the, the way they want it, just like everyone else has had that opportunity. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that, um, right now. I understand they want to get going, so I'm not trying to, I'm sorry, but.
Can I make a quick comment about that? I can technically do an application because it's unzoned.
You guys annexed it, but it doesn't have a zone, so we can go to the closest zoning, which is industrial or mixed.
Well, that's kind of my question. Can you, can you part, can you do the partial parcel annex, parcel zonings for the R18? So they, uh, so they can get going on theirs, the others we can table. Maybe the RR1, I think that's pretty much decided, isn't it? The RR1s?
Yeah, they want that.
So they, that's decided. Uh, the mixed use for, um, down there on Woods, that probably is something that is decided.
If, if not, it'll be one that, if you zone it any, any other way, one of the uses on that property becomes non-compliant. And I don't feel that's something to put onto a property owner out the gate.
Okay, so at this point here, we have, um, the R18 for sure and the RR1s. And I don't know about the mixed use. Uh, the other two have not been contacted quite, uh, we haven't gotten written agreement at this point. But in, in lieu of trying to help, help, um, LB Land Holdings move forward, um, my suggestion, counsel, and this point is that we, uh, change the zoning on the, uh, LB Land Holdings and the Freeman Farms. And I'm sorry, what's the other one going to be called? The other RR1s, they're already established. These people are already.
The Barfus Minor subdivision.
Barfus Minor subdivision, okay. That's, that's my suggestion at this point, so we can, so, and then we can get the information from these other landowners, uh, before we move. Oh, and then, uh, the manufacturing, general manufacturing, that one as well.
Yeah, and the mixed use of the woods there, right?
And the mixed use, I, I think, the mixed use on the woods. So that's my suggestion at this point, counsel.
And when I went and talked to them today.
To the woods?
When I went and talked to a lot of people today, they're comfortable with quarter acre lots. Okay, they're comfortable with it now.
That's, that's a guess I got last night that the R18 was acceptable.
Yeah, I did as well.
Now, and then the other thing that I really debate with, and, and I've talked about this before, but if we, I don't want to throw a tax burden on the citizens by putting in a lift station if the developer can, can carry that cost for us. And so that's the thing, that's the one that's really wanting me to say, ugh, we probably ought to do this. And so there's where my balance comes.
And I, that, that's a huge point for me.
Right.
Um, along with phone calls I've taken, sentiment from people, most of the concerns that have been heard. I mean, I, I don't think any of us want a ton of development, right? I, I personally don't. I love farmland. I love being in, in an agricultural environment. But at the same time, as it touches our annexation boundaries in the land use plan that's been put in place for 20 years, we need to honor the, the things that have been set. This varies from that slightly, but I think to the advantage. And I think, I think that's the sentiment that I've received as we've discussed through industrial on a 30-year plan versus coming back to something that might be a little bit more fitting. Also help Freeman Farms with, you know, being connected. And, and allow for the infrastructure costs to not be a burden on the rest of the citizens of, you know, by, by the developer playing game, um, in helping cover the cost of the lift station, so.
And then just before any motion, let me ask this question now. Just to reiterate, the tile lines, um, you know, Mayor, you've talked about this, but we'll make sure that part of the development agreement and part of that whole discussion is that we keep those whole and that we follow a process that's set out by state law that we, we follow.
They have to be kept well for, for agriculture's sake, but also for residential's sake. Uh, we've got to keep that water at high, high water table. That water's got to be, be able to be moved out, so.
They have to be accessible.
They can, they have to be made whole.
It'll be accessible to be cleaned.
Yeah, and they probably need to be cleaned. Some of them may be close to 100 years old.
Right.
This, this conversation is, is far from over as it regards to this property, because there's so much that has to be done to honor the things that the citizens have concerns with.
100%.
But right, and again, right now, we're talking.
I know, that's, that's what I'm saying is because this is a zoning discussion, it's the beginning. It's the foundational part prior to agreements, prior to honoring and making sure that the citizens get the things that they're asking for, which is, the, the next steps are critical. And I just can't emphasize that enough. How, how important it is that we do our due diligence in these next steps appropriately.
If, if I may have one more comment, Mayor.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to throw any more into this, because this has been a, a really good conversation. We don't have to have property owners' permission to zone their property. I just want to throw that out there. All of the zoning questions in the city are made by the city council, not by individual property owners. You guys determine what the, the zone is for this property. And that may or may not coincide with what the property owners want. It's what you determine as the voice of the people is the best solution for the property. It may be, it, and I think it's a great idea to get the input from these property owners. I'm not disputing that at all. But at the end of the day, if they don't come to a consensus about what it should be zoned, I would say let's zone an RR1 just as a holding place. And then they can come in and, and, uh, request a, a change to a, a more dense zone at a future time, if that's what they want to do.
My, my.
That's just my thought.
My argument with that is just simply, we wouldn't be doing our job as city council for not listening to them and talking to them first. And so, uh, I, I feel.
No, that's fair. You're right.
So I, I think we owe them that.
My, my question is, I, I don't see a corollary. It's not that accepting this is not listening to them. That's why these next steps are critical as we, this is the zoning, the, the, the base that allows for the development agreement and the plan to come to us, which is going to still be approved.
Well, if you owned that R110 and they just went and zoned it on you without you having any kind of input on it and all that, how would you feel?
Oh, I'm not speaking about that property.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Those other pieces.
I see, yeah, understood.
All right. Okay. So at this point, if I'm hearing this correctly, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, what we're looking at here is, uh, the zoning change for, uh, the LB Land Holdings to R18. Uh, the wood, the, the woods, uh, um, I can't read that. What is it?
The wood multi-use.
Wood, wood multi-use, uh, their, their reception center to multi-use and the Freeman Farms and the Barfus subdivision to RR1. And the other two, uh, Harrises and the other one down at the south, we will reach out to them and, and get their input on the other two. So that, I, if I understand right, that is the, um, that is kind of what we have on the table at this point. So do we have a, can we move forward with that?
I can't put all that. Motion that we do that ordinance excluding the, uh, R20 Anderson Farm and the Harris Farm for ordinance 25-13 zoning tax parcels as of the LB.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by, uh, Blair Westergaard and seconded by Wes. Oh, I've lost track. I think it's you.
Okay, well, I, after talking to those citizens today and everything, I'll go ahead and, uh, vote yes on this one.
Thank you, Brett.
Wes, yes.
Brandon, yes.
Vote yes.
Blair, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. That was, uh, I think we learned a lot. Everybody learned tons from this and so, uh, we'll move forward now, so. Not that I'm masochist here, but a discussion and possible action on adopting ordinance number 25-14, rezoning parcel 05-060-0088 to, from RR1 to R110. Okay. This is the one, uh, kind of over here. Yeah, there you go. Can I, can I ask, uh, is this one the one where we're looking at the affordable housing?
No, no.
That's not it, okay, that was my question.
So this parcel is at the end of what's one ten south. Um, almost behind Ron Keller tires, the property owner, um, is looking to relocate to, uh, what I would call exceedingly rural Utah. But thought that, uh, if a rezone and, and getting it to where it is developable would, would help with the sale. And so that's really the purpose for the rezone, um, there's no development application associated to this rezone, there's nothing. It's just, he feels like he could sell it for a little bit more.
That's a private road.
It is, and so any development, um, if it came to development, we'd have to work out on how to get the private road right into the city's hands, so it is its own separate parcel though, which is interesting, but yeah.
It's a real cut-up piece of property, but it's.
So, so where is it, behind Archballs?
Yeah, that's, that's Ron Keller Tire and then that's Maverick and Member First, right there.
Highway String?
It's a nestled little spot.
Behind Canfield and all that, Blair.
Okay.
And if you go down around Mark Arred's little thing, Dead Ends, they're going to the west. At one ten south.
Or by Thornley's house?
No, Thornley's is on two twenty-five.
Is it?
He's on the same as Badis.
Oh.
I will say the, so the zoning for the lots to the west, southwest and south are RR one. Um, the zoning for the houses next, um, all to the east are R one ten, and that's the zone the landowner is hoping to go. Everything to the north is zoned commercial.
And how many acres is that?
It's two-ish.
Two?
So, and there's already a house clearly there and.
And any of the, so even if the next landowner would have decided to keep the agriculture with the horse pastures and stuff that's there, fully permitted as part of, it'd just be grandfathered in, it, um, the only thing that would trigger new standards would be actual development of the property, and then it'd have to match the R one tone regulate, R one ten regulations.
All right, any other, any questions, counsel, on this parcel?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance number twenty-five fourteen.
Okay, motion by Brett, do I have a second, seconded by Blair, uh, let's see, Wes, you're up.
Wes, yes.
Brandon, yes.
Bo, yes.
Blair, yes.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Okay, that completes our new council business, uh, we appreciate all the comments and suggestions and discussion, we learned a lot and, um, thanks everybody for your patience, thanks counsel for your input. Adoption, uh, we have a consent agenda, the adoption of the May warrant register and the adoption of the May financial statements. We can do this as one motion on the consent agenda. The councils, are there any questions, I've reviewed both of those, I didn't see any, kind of any issues there myself, but maybe you did. I don't know, as you went through them. Can, maybe, can I have a, a motion then?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Okay, uh, motion by Brandon Bonk, first motion of, uh, of many, I hope. Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Blair, any discussion? Okay, let's see, um, Brandon, you're up.
Brandon, yes.
Bo, yes.
Blair, yes.
I, I did have some concerns on him, but I don't have him highlighted here, so I'll go in and meet with, uh, oh, treasurer, who, who, I'll go meet with Shari and get those answered, so, so I'll say yes.
Okay, but you'll get your questions answered, okay, and.
Can I ask what nature of questions they were?
Oh, on the, some of the expenses, I just wanted to go over those a little bit.
Understand why they were there?
Yeah, and.
Looked at a place?
Yeah, and, and kind of hefty expenses, and I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared, I should have been, had too many other things.
But you're okay with the yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, Wes, very good, thanks Wes. I'll, so the motion passes, uh, we'll move on to calendar items, uh, review of the calendar coming up. We have our, uh, heydays, uh, coming, oh, Pioneer Day, but heydays on the Friday and Saturday. Hopefully, we can have everybody there, we've got a couple of events that kind of require all of us, the breakfast on the 26th.
Check Brandon, what's his schedule?
Yeah, yeah.
Breakfast, fried or.
Oh, by the way, you're doing breakfast on the 26th.
Invite me to breakfast.
Come on out.
Yeah, I can, I can help.
Okay, and then also on the 25th, we are doing hot dogs and hamburgers and a kind of a dinner for, uh, the community. The suggested, uh, donation or suggested cost is $5 and what we'll do is we'll donate that to the food pantry, that, those proceeds will go to the food pantry. Uh, primary elections coming up on the eleventh, on the 12th.
Mayor, can we, can we please move the planning commission meeting off that night? That's not fair to the public to.
On the election?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we need to move, uh.
I just think we, we need to honor that evening and give people.
Yeah, it needs to be open for the elections, absolutely. Good comment.
I think that might be for the planning commission to decide. We can request that they do that, but it may, it may require a vote of the planning commission.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. You'll, you'll follow through with that, uh, will you follow through with that, Bill?
Yeah, we'll find it.
Okay. Okay, we have, this is going to be kind of exciting, we, on the first day of the, so the, uh, this is 100 years for the Box Elder County Fair and rodeo, and, uh, began in 1925. Here we are in 2025, 100 years. The Posse and, and they want to do another parade, and this is going to be a all horses parade on the 18th, that'll be Monday. And it'll start at the fairgrounds and, uh, go south to the Maverick Station and then east to, um.
Six North.
On, uh, east to Tremont, east, east to, uh, well, Highway 102 and then, uh, okay, then to Tremont Street, up to Six North.
Back to Forest.
Back to, back to three fifty and then I'll back over to the fairgrounds. So it's going to be a, I think a two and a half or three mile, uh, parade, but it'll be all horses, uh, horse drawn wagons and, and, uh, it's just going to be a really cool thing. So we're excited about that, that'll be on the, uh, 18th, Monday of the fair. Uh, Corsetic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Turns on four hundred and then goes down to three fifty and back to the fairgrounds.
Yeah, that's right. So six, yeah, that's right. Okay, so then the, um, of course, the 100th anniversary for the Box Elder County Fair. Uh, I think it's the, it's the best fair in the whole state, but I'm just partial. And then August 19th will be city council, but we're not going to have, we'll cancel city council on the 19th, but we'll have it on the 26th, so kind of gets us, uh, uh, off the fair week and everything and, the fair parade, we, uh, Brandon, what we do is we have everybody, we're going to get a couple of side-by-sides and, and we'll be in the parade as a council, so that'll be on the, uh, on the fair parade on the 20th. So, uh, the reason why we changed it is so that we can do the, the canvas on the election, we'll announce that on the 26th.
What's that?
The canvas?
Official results.
Up on the 12th?
From the 12th, yeah, so we have to, we have to accept the, uh, the election.
Okay.
Results. We don't have to accept it, but we typically do.
We will.
We will. Okay, uh, farmer's market, uh, on, uh, let's see, the next farmer's market will be on the fourth Friday and, uh.
And can.
That's the fair days, or I mean, that's heydays, the 26th.
Yeah, yeah, so we won't have it on the 26th.
Well, who's going to let them know?
We will, we'll let Kaia know on that, yeah. All right, so. All right, get out on the second Saturday.
That farmer's market, is there some way we can open that up for vendors, well, for both nights, I mean, both days? Because boy, that just seems like the more crowded we get that park, the better.
They've had a, they've had a real struggle with it, uh, the last couple of times and, and I, I even wonder about just combining them together.
That's what I'm asking, couldn't we just combine them and let them both function both nights?
Yeah. So that we can get more, and, and a lot of people are expecting the produce, of course, the produce doesn't really come on until the end of July and, and that kind of thing, so we're going to, hopefully, this next, uh, farmer's market will have lots of produce and that's what people kind of want. Anyway, yeah, I think we need to look at maybe combining them. All right, I see, is that the end of the calendar?
Yeah.
Okay, any unfinished business, counsel? Okay, hearing none, um, we'll move on to reports, uh, administration reports, Bill, have you got anything for us?
Really quick, um, a couple of things, there was a question earlier about affordable housing. Affordable housing is actually very explicitly and specifically designed in state, or defined in state code as being housing that is affordable by those people in the community making 80% of the AMI, the area median income, that's state code definition. We have our, our numbers right from the Census Bureau that puts our, our, um, median household income at eight, 80,000, pretty close to $80,000, and so the area median income, um, multiplied by 80% gives us about $64,000. So an affordable house in Tremonton would be triple that, triple the 64,000, which was right around $190,000. That's the target. It is defined, it's very specific.
That's according to HUD, right?
Well, state code as well as.
But didn't you say yesterday, one, somebody yesterday said it was closer to 280, so that, is that math right now today?
The 280, no, that's, that's the median, um, if, if you were making the median income in the city, you could afford 240.
Okay.
So I don't know where the 280 came from necessarily.
I must have misheard. So you said affordable housing was, what was the number again?
So it's 80%.
No, just the total?
190.
190?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the, that's the area median income affordable, according to state code, 80% or less could have, of the area median income could afford that much house.
Okay.
And if you can, again, if you can find me that house, please let me know.
I'll buy three of them if you can find them.
The other thing I want to say is, and, and you guys have a chance to look over the department reviews, uh, review their reports and things, we really do, and I say this every time, but I'm going to keep saying it, we really, really do have an incredible team working for us here at the city. Just, there's a million fun things going on all the time, and it is a, a privilege and an honor to serve with, uh, these people who give of themselves every day to make sure that we're safe, that we're happy and that, uh, our, our, we're clean and it's, what an amazing time and what an amazing place and what an amazing crew I get to serve with, and I'm, I'm grateful every single day to be a part of it.
Thank you, do you have anything else for us?
That's it for me.
Hey, uh, DRC, Jeff, do you have anything for us?
First report is that I was able to submit our moderate income housing report to the state, um, to meet their deadline of the end of the month, which beats last year's record by about 13 days. And, uh, so that, anyway, that was, that was a nice thing to get off my plate. The other, um, term is, Bill and I have a meeting next week with the, um, it's the 28th, with the superintendent and the business administrator at the school district, and we're going to talk to them about how to coordinate because we know we have some larger developments coming, uh, towards us and, and we feel like if we could get the school district involved with the land use and the planning, that, that we might be able to bring them into, uh, either working with the developers beforehand to help, help make sure they have space for schools as the city grows. Because of the utility demands in the area, um, I just felt it was important that we get the school district and, um, uh, school district involved much sooner than just saying what development's going on because if the land's already been bought and has already been designed and, and, uh, landowners, developers have, have already done all the math of this is what we need for it to pencil, the school board doesn't have a chance to get into that development as a potential site for any of their school levels, so, um, the meeting will have a few topics, um, but one of them will be working with, uh, being a little bit more proactive with coordination so that, um, they, they know not only what's coming, but even what's being conceptually talked about.
Thank you. Uh, department head reports, we still have a couple of them.
Couple of survivors, three survivors.
Okay, Jeff, Charles?
Okay, doing pretty good, uh, fire department, uh, we had 831 and just had 832, went out another transfer, uh, with the hospital. That's a lot of our calls, um, lately, and so it's about 43% of our calls, um, as we speak. And we're on track to hit, you know, right between 1600, 1800 calls like we did last year, um, probably will exceed that. We're working on training with other departments in the area, we're running lots of, uh, calls with, uh, Snowville lately with all the traffic accidents on 84, um, and so, uh, the last one was a pretty, pretty bad call, four teenage kids involved, you guys probably saw in the paper, um, one of them did not make it, so we had a debrief on that one. It was really good, um, the results of that is just, we need to do more training with Snowville and, um, outside agencies, so we're working on that, um, and, and developing more relationships there. And, uh, contracts with the hospital for transfers, um, where we visit that, uh, get that on the agenda for next meeting and give you more details there, uh, and with a company called Bryser Compliance Engine as well to help us with, uh, inspections for fire, um, and things like that with businesses in the city. And then, um, our medic contract, I've worked on that, revised it, now I'm running it past our lawyer, I'll meet with them tomorrow to do that, and that's where we're at, so.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question, go back to that fire inspection, what do you, is it a program?
Bryser, the Compliance Engine, yes, it is, um, lots of other departments in the state are using them. For example, uh, top of my head, I'm remembering, uh, Leyton City, Ogden, um, Syracuse, I believe is one. There's, there's quite a few of them that are, that are using it, Provo is another, um.
And it's just a program, you guys would still do the inspections?
Yeah, so this costs the city absolutely nothing, uh, we could actually, I brought it up, uh, I think it was two meetings ago, three meetings ago, we could actually make a small amount of money, um, and it would be charging the contractors who come in and do like the hood inspections, like at McDonald's when they come in and do those inspections, um, we would actually charge them a fee through Bryser and Bryser would be doing all the, the groundwork and behind-the-scenes stuff, but we would still go and do our own inspection of the building, uh, for safety, so.
So, so there's one already one in place, so that you cancel that one, the, what is it, the?
You're talking about live?
Live.
That's not an inspection, that's just a program that we use to help us track our own inspections. This is with the hood systems, the fire systems, like, we don't go in and do, um, like you guys, at Northrop, you would actually inspect your fu, your fire suppression system.
But on live, they were, they were going to the contractors, had to put in their stuff.
Right, but.
Like the, the guys or the hood guys.
This wouldn't replace that, it would go right along with it, it would complement that and it'd help us to control and, and track better, is what it would do. Helps to get better compliance, hence the name Compliance Engine, that's why they call it that, so.
Are you full up on your manpower?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Have you replaced the captain?
Not yet, he just barely quit the other day.
Who was it?
Dan.
So, uh, along with that, just because you're up here and everything, uh, I'm hearing a lot of rumblings about the fire department. And so, um, what I'm hearing is, um, uh, we're leaving, I think we're leaving a lot of revenue on the table at the hospital because we're not doing appropriate transfer, not, I'm sorry, let me take that back, appropriate is an incorrect word, we're just not, we're not meeting their, their needs the way we can?
I would agree with you, yes.
And so.
That's what I'm looking at in the contract.
Okay, and so I think that needs to be looked at, and then I'm also hearing some problems with some employees, um, some of your employees aren't happy because of some other, so.
some of your employees aren't happy because of some others, so chief, get on top of it. And then, and then, um, I got a suggestion, but you don't need to do a thing with it if you don't want to, okay? But, um, I just suggest like with your transfers, almost anyone can drive, right? I mean-
If you want them to, that's a liability, but it's up to you guys.
What I'm saying is, if you train someone like, if, if I wanted to volunteer to come and, and drive on transfers for you and I went through the proper, proper training, could, could programs and ideas like that help you as a department to be able to get more transfers and do-
I heard you were willing to do that, and that's something that, again, that the council can, can suggest and I'm more than willing to do it if that's what you guys want, but, hear me out, but, we open ourselves up to liability with that.
Okay, well, just that, the idea, that's all.
And so, go, go ahead.
Just to make it clear in my mind, from what I know, which is forty years of it, if we give up transfers-
Oh, no, no, no.
But I'm, I'm serious, I got, I got the same stuff and I know more what's going on.
I don't know who said we're giving them up, that wasn't even part of the plan.
We've had Brigham come take a call when we sit here, I know that in the last two months. If we give that up, then we will, we won't have the revenue to fund the fire department because we're already stretched.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's suggesting we give up transfers, we're, we're holding on to that and we're gonna keep doing that.
But we're doing it inadvertently, I don't even know if he is, but we have.
Right, so I, to, to your point Blair, um, I agree with you. We, we're at eight hundred and thirty-two calls right now, we could be probably a hundred or a hundred past that, I don't know the exact number, don't, don't quote me on a hundred, but we have given up a lot of calls to Brigham because we're out and we're double tapped at the same time. Forty-three percent of our calls is transfers, and out of that, that, those are coming in, that forty-three percent, a lot of the time, is coming in, and again, I don't have the exact numbers.
It's probably seventy percent of our revenue.
Yeah, well, and again, I don't have the numbers, but if you want to, we can talk about it, I can get the numbers, I have my bag, I can grab them.
Jeff, can you, can you start a spreadsheet so that every time there's a, a denial, that there's a note put in place so that you can come back and speak to that, because there is a perception that-
I do have those numbers, and I would like an audience with you guys so that I can, I can talk over that and-
Yeah.
Put that on the agenda for next, next time.
I think if you, if you keep really close track of that, you can protect yourself-
For sure.
And you can, you can put down rumors, but there are, there are, there's speculation out there and comments that, that if your, your guys might get, begin, be getting paid regardless of what they're doing.
Right.
And so we've even-
There's always a speculation that the fire department sits at, at the station, and does this, right? That's, that's old school.
But if they're getting paid regardless of what they're doing, then there might be less motivation to accept those transfers. And that, that will directly impact your ability and your leadership, and you don't want them undermining you.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, no, the guys are taking transfers, and my point was to Blair, that, um, out of those calls, we're getting double tapped, and what I mean is, we're getting a nine-one-one call and a transfer at the same time, and sometimes they're asking us to take two transfers. I've, I've asked my guys to hold, to tell them to hold those transfers if they're not emergent and if there's a nine-one-one call at the same time. We only have four people on shift, sometimes three, if a part-timer doesn't take that shift, right? And so when we're down staffed like that, we're relying on callbacks as we have in the past, and it's not working as it's been stated in the past. It's not as, it's not as functional as it was before, and that's because of the workforce, right? We're not allowed to leave our job to go and volunteer to take a fire call anymore like we were. That's just the way it is, and so I can't force people to come back, um, the volunteers just aren't there. And so, because of manpower, this hospital said before, I've heard them say it myself, they've said it to me, we have five ambulances, but I don't have, I don't have ten people to go in those ambulances, that's what I need. I only have four, and I have to split them between a fire truck or two ambulances. And so when we do that, we send two ambulances out of the city, what have we just done to our city? We've allowed it to have no coverage at all for fire or EMS. So what happens when your mother, your brother, your dad has a heart attack and we're on a transfer for the hospital? So I've told the hospital straight up to their face, and I've told my crew, only take one at a time, and we're only gonna give them one ambulance at a time, because they're at a hospital where this patient is stable and they have people there that can handle it. We have four people that can take care of this city, and this city's our main priority, it's my main priority. That's what you're paying me for.
Count five, you should be in on that number at times, just so you know.
I am, I am.
We feel like that, that if it's a daytime call for a second ambulance, that you should be going.
I'm fully aware of that, and I am.
And just so we can provide support to you, we're, we're looking very closely at all of our transfers. We're looking at what we can do to increase the acuity of the patient that we can keep. Because that's, it's lost revenue for us too when we ask you to transfer.
Yeah.
Lots of lost revenue, and so I'm just saying, we, we can talk more about it, but I think if you keep track of everything and you, you have everything documented, it can really help you to speak to this and protect you.
Okay.
And Jeff, we're not putting you on the fire line, please, we're just, things I'm hearing, things I'm hearing and I'm sharing with you, okay?
You're getting a problem that was started before you got here, so I wanna make that clear.
Yeah, I'm working hard, you guys, trust me, I'm, I guess I had all these things that, I don't wanna take a ton of time, I've taken a lot, but that wasn't my intention, but trust me, I'm, I'm there, I'm with you, I agree with you, um, there's a lot of improvement that needs to be made. Um, and there's obviously never enough money to do those things, and that's just the way it goes, so.
Thanks for talking to us about it.
All right. Thanks Jeff. Skylar? Okay, thank you very much.
I sent it.
Appreciate you guys.
Tell the mayor to sign it so it'll come back.
What am I telling?
I sat down to the-
I got a few things, I'll try and be quick though. But I wanna, I want you to know what things have been going on. Uh, first of all, I wanna recognize all the fourteen full-time and six part-time employees in the Public Works Department. They do a really excellent job. That said, um, oh, and let me, so we just did employee evaluations, we set some good goals. We've got a lot of guys that are, uh, gonna be getting certifications coming up, uh, take, testing for certifications at the end of August. And that'll, that's good, that helps everybody. Um, we promoted Dusty Dean to the plant manager of the treatment plant. That's a long time coming, um, he's doing a really excellent job. One of the things that he's been focusing on is, hasn't necessarily been addressed so much in the past, is we have problems with fats, oil, and grease in there, and a lot of that comes from our, the plants, it comes from West Liberty Foods, it comes from Post, it also can come from anywhere else, it could come from every restaurant. But he's set up, uh, uh, meetings with West Liberty Foods and, and with Post. We met with West Liberty Foods today, they actually have a pre-treatment there. We went through their pre-treatment program and found some improvements that could be made that would really help us out. And I suspect that, um, continuing to, to follow up on this issue is gonna really help us out at the plant. And that'll be good. Roads and sidewalks is a, is a big thing that we keep hearing and running into. Uh, I just wanna say, um, I'm really grateful to have Andrew Beecher hired on as the Assistant Public Works Director. He is developing a database for the roads and the sidewalks. We were using, uh, previous studies and information, GIS maps and that kind of thing that we have, but a lot of times we have these nebulous sort of plans and things, and what we really need are eyes on the ground. And that's where the general public comes in, that's where the city council has heard many comments on different road situations and, and, and even though, you know, Public Works is out and about, we don't see everything, we don't know everything. It's helpful to get those comments, um, but it's more helpful to do something about it, and that's what we're doing. So that's, that's high priority for us, it's something that, uh, I feel like we're more able to attack, starting now with, with Andrew there, I'm really thrilled about that. The process will take some time and will be ongoing all the time, that's just the way that is. But, but that'll be addressed and is being addressed. Um, I, I want you to know that our water quality is good. We just had a sanitary survey this past week and, that we have every three years. And, um, the state comes out and inspects every aspect, every piece of infrastructure in our water system, it's very thorough. Um, there are some findings, not major findings, but findings for small improvements to be made, nothing that impacts water quality. But, but we do have a lot of old and aging infrastructure in our water system. And, and, uh, these sanitary surveys are good opportunities for, for even us to, to look more in depth at how, at our water infrastructure, we have old tanks, we've got a lot of old pipelines. Uh, and, and there's other improvements that we can make such as, um, replacing at some point the pumps down in our, in our spring collection areas down by the river, replacing those pumps, perhaps with larger pumps. Now with this new pump line that we have in, we could possibly increase our flows there that are available. And putting VFDs on them to control them, to ramp them up and down to accommodate the demand and, and to, and to use more water, to get more flow. So, so those are some good things. I also wanna bring up, we're looking pretty closely at making some changes to our composting program. We don't wanna decrease level of service to anybody, but I believe that there's, uh, a lot of cost savings and improvements that can be made by centralizing the, the composting program over to the composting facility. And so we're just right now looking at how to make that work. If any of you are interested in participating in discussions on that, that would be fantastic. I, I assume maybe some people might, but-
You're just talking about moving the grass dump out to there, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it, there's, there's a lot of problems and, and costs and, and mess and concerns there. So that we're trying to figure out the best way to do that.
You're talking about where they drop off the clippings and?
Yeah.
I have two-
Don't you think if we do that, that they're just gonna put more in their regular trash can? And what does that do? What's the negative?
Well, I, the, the, the issue is, one of the issues is, we get a lot of commercial, a lot of commercial lawn clippings dumped there. And, and the fact is, we need it. And so, th- they'll take it wherever it's, 'cause we don't charge for that, at, at least at this time, we don't charge for that, they'll-
Be a workshop item? Just, just curious, seems like it, we could open up a pretty good discussion there.
Yeah.
I, I see a lot of people dumping tons of like-
Horse manure.
Horse manure, and I don't know how many, we don't have too many horses back.
Oh, we, we have an idea that probably the majority of-
This isn't-
What gets dumped comes from outside of Tremonton city boundaries, for sure. That's another aspect that we can address. We don't wanna, uh, decrease any kind of level of service to our, our residents, but there are improvements that can be made, and we can centralize that over there. So-
Oh, they go clear out to the-
Mm-hmm.
Oh, out to the, where the wood products go.
But they're only open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, every third, first, third, and fifth, Sun, Saturdays though.
Yeah, that's, that, those are things that we can change, those are things that we can look at.
But some people mow their lawn at six o'clock in the morning, some people mow their lawn at ten o'clock at night and wanna go dump grass, what do you do? Them the kind of things.
I dump my grass like after city council sometime.
True.
No one's there to monitor that, is that what you're saying?
It's eleven PM, no.
It'll be eleven this time, I don't have it this time.
I, I think when we discuss it, I, I think it'll become fairly evident that there's a benefit to moving that and we can keep the level of service there for our residents.
Okay, thanks Carl.
Thank you.
All right, uh, council reports, um, let's see, Wes? Do you have anything to report?
No, if word of me, I'll be home just in time to cook, so.
Well, we have a couple more things to do, so we're gonna keep you here a little longer.
Okay, I have nothing.
Okay, are the people, uh, mail-in ballots for a primary, is there such a thing? Okay, I got a, a lot of people saying they're gonna be out of town and they would like to vote, how do they go about doing that? Okay, I'll let them know, when will they go out, do you know?
The county mail-in, I would expect pretty soon because they have to send out the UOCO at a certain time and they've already done that, so the next one should be like-
Perfect, thank you, we'll let them know that. Bo and I finished up those strategies, I sent a copy to all of you. Haven't heard anything back, but, um-
Did you send it to me? I don't remember seeing it.
I can't remember. I'll look and see, if not, I'll send them to you, but anyway, and then I'll send some to Brandon as well, but, um, I, please, if you would go over them before the next meeting, and then can we take a work session, work session in, um, September sometime and maybe just kinda go over and see what our strategy's gonna be in the future? Yeah, okay.
A great idea.
And then the only last thing I've got is, um, I was on a walk, and I'm sorry it's in my neighborhood, but there's a sidewalk missing.
I was just gonna bring that up.
Yeah. It's-
Seven, seven seventy-five West.
Yeah, can we get that repaired? Thank you.
You gonna make the homeowner or Carl?
Cause Micah brought it up at a-
No, that's a different one. I think it's-
Right across from Sean Jensen, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and the guy that built the house-
That's the one he brought up?
Is gone.
Okay, it's at Dally's house, Scott Dally's house.
Scott.
But I mean, it's gone.
No, no, this isn't, the one I'm thinking is not Scott Dally.
Okay, there may be two, who do, hey, Public Works.
Carl.
Carl.
What's the, what's the road going in?
Rogers, Roger Friedal's Road, what is that one? Five, six, five seventy?
Five seventy.
It's on five seventy.
Oh.
Down towards, uh, just before you get to where it curves up, about two houses this way on the left, there's a sidewalk missing. About fifteen feet of it.
So we, we have two projects coming up where we're, where we're finishing sidewalks, and I think that's one of them.
But check it for sure, be, uh-
There's another one, a whole house is missing their side, in the same subdivision, but it's on the-
That's on seven seventy-five.
Seven seventy-five and about one.
I mean, there's, there's sidewalks up to their driveway and their driveway counts, but there's no sidewalk, right there.
Right there.
And they go over to five seventy?
Yep, that's one of them.
Keep going down five seventy, keep going, okay, scroll in right there. And you can see, right there, see where it says five seventy on the road? Keep coming down, keep coming down, right, keep coming down, now go up, right there, that sidewalk's missing. That's weird. Yeah, it's got, I mean, you can't ride a bike on it or anything, it's just gone.
My daughter has to go into the road and the-
Yeah.
And that other one's-
The city pouring that little one, but I can't see the city pouring the one in front of the house.
The bad part is, I think-
The house has been sold.
I think Bench must have missed having him do it, because the guy that built it is not the guy that owns it now.
Right.
So it's-
I have one more question, the, the rock on the other side of my fence there at the walking trail, do we still have some of that rock? I'll help lay it.
Where?
Up against my fence?
Little park up to the north.
It got, so right where the walking trail starts?
Yeah.
We've got my fence, and, and we only, we did up until where the, where it starts, but then my, the whole second half of my fence to the thing is, uh, the, the paper got laid out. In fact, la, the other day it blew up and over and was wrapped on my basketball hoop.
You can tell Rusty, I think there's a little bit of it left down there, but I don't think we had all the water in before.
I'm willing to help throw some rock out, whatever we need to do. It's not big, no, it'd be twen, ten wheelbarrows full and we, we're done.
No, no, this is the, the gold rock that's over there.
Yeah.
The big stuff.
I don't have any, I don't know.
Let Carl and Rusty work it out, cause Rusty'll know.
I've got some-
Well, you got hands if you need them.
We do, I don't know where-
Hold nine and a half fingers.
I got nine and a half fingers to offer, yep.
I got some that I just had dumped in my yard and I got too much, and so if you need some, you can take it.
Yeah, right here is where it, so my, all of this is done, but about right where that green thing is, the rest of this between the fence and the sidewalk, and it just becomes a weed patch, you know, and so I go out and pull all the weeds every ti, all the time and get rid of them so that we don't, so at least it's dirt.
That's a between Rusty and Lindale but.
It's a real simple, I mean, it's only this wide.
Like, I'm going back, I don't know if we got water over there where we wanted it.
Got it.
But Rusty will know. Rusty and Lynn will know.
Okay, that's all I have.
I don't, I don't have any.
Bo?
Economic development wise, um there, there are some businesses that have been reaching out, some good ones that want to move to Tremonton so we're working on that um and you know, relocation um and so that, that's good. Also, we're gonna start seeing RDA monies over this. So we've got a lot of excitement for um Main Street and some of the planning there, which is gonna help economic development. So I'm just, I'm really excited about what's to come with our ability as a city to lure business and we're hitting the numbers. So that's working well. Um there've been talks, I've, I've heard a bunch of people, I don't know how I've been associated, but I've, I just got a text again while during the meeting saying that Bo Lewis is supporting the removal of the golf course. So I just want to be on public record saying that Bo Lewis is not trying to get rid of the golf course and I don't know where that came from.
I've had a lot of questions on the golf but you guys went to a couple of meetings and now they're all scared.
Perfect.
Bo Lewis is not trying to get rid of the golf course.
I started that.
No one on the city council is trying to get rid of the golf course.
Correct.
Okay, cause.
Anyway.
We've all been hit on that.
So. Um. I love the golf, actually.
I apologize for last night talking about Walmart coming in. If that pissed anybody off, I know there's speculation. I apologize to start rumors or whatever but that's what I've been told. I'm just gonna throw it out there. If Walmart's not coming in, let's propose Winco, please.
I've, I've heard all them too but I've never heard anything sitting here at any meeting about any of that.
Anyway, I, I'm not trying to get any speculation but honestly.
Well, I, I have.
Been a long time since I've gone to Ridley's because the last time I went there, we kept getting to buy a bunch of expired food and so I've just gone to Kents where a lot of people I know also go to Winco in Ogden and Logan. So Winco, if you're thinking of grocery stores, but a clothing store would be fantastic here in.
But we don't, we don't have a say.
We just create an environment where they can succeed, right?
I know, but if we're, if we're gonna try to get some.
Gonna spread rumors, spread them big.
I want, I'm ready for soup and a sandwich at Old Grisham.
The um.
All right, well, let's move on here. Uh we've got, we've got stills, quite a bit of stuff to do so.
And RDA.
Uh Brandon, do you have anything for us, first time?
Just thank you for your trust. Hopefully I, I'm here past this December. I'm here till, just till December, right?
Well, yeah, for now. We'll see how it goes. Yeah. Um we just uh appreciate everybody. We appreciate the patience and and we had a long discussion tonight and so I don't have anything uh to add to anything tonight so I'm just going to uh ask for one more.
Make a motion, adjourn and go to RDA.
I second it.
Uh no, let's, let's do this. Let's uh, let's uh adjourn and then we're going to go into, no, let's uh go into closed session and then we'll adjourn. So we've got a couple of issues we gotta deal with.
Want to do RDA first?
Uh no, let's, well.
Then we'd have to open the meeting and close.
Yeah, we'd have to open the meeting and close it again so let's go ahead and and uh go on to make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll make a motion, we go and.
I'll second it. Thanks, you guys.
I made the motion. Uh Wes, did you second?
Sure.
Okay, all right, closed session.
Thank you. Those are mine. They're mine.
Did we jump over Zach? Did we jump over Zach? Thank you. Appreciate, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for being involved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did jump over Parks and Rec, even though he's here.
I'll ask if this has anything to do with him.
You got something to tell us?